Well, good afternoon, everyone. It is this is the special meeting of the Board of Directors for San Diego Community Power. It's October 28th. It's a little after 3:30, so I'm going to call this closed session to order. Kimberly, can you do a roll call for us?
Yes, Director Baber.
Yeah.
Director De Vina.
De Vina here.
Director Montgomery Step.
Here.
Vice Chair Padilla. Looks like absent and Chair Moscow.
Here.
We have a call.
All right, well, thank you so much. We have two items in our closed session agenda for today. First one is public employee appointment pursuant to government code section 54957 titled Chief Executive Officer. Our second item is conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph three of subdivision D of section 54956.92 potential cases. Mr. Baron, do we have anything further on these items that you'd like to report?
No, Mr. Chair, we do not, thank you.
All right, do we have public comment on these items?
Not on these items, no.
Do any directors wish to comment on these items before we move to closed session?
No, but I just want to make sure we are going to close this link and then go on another link, is that correct?
Right, so this link will stay open. Kimberly will stay on this link and then there's a closed session link that you've been sent. And then you'll just kind of sign off here and go on the closed session link.
And for, okay, thanks.
All right, perfect, so let's move into closed session.
Megan.
Thanks, by the way.
Oh, you're welcome. Megan, I just made you a co-host so that you can monitor the attendees and promote to panelists as necessary.
Hello?
Mr. Powers, did you have a question before the meeting?
No, I want to make a non-agenda item public comment.
Okay, as soon as the meeting starts, Megan will handle that.
And it might be three and a half minutes instead of three, just want to make sure that's okay.
We'll have to ask the chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Megan, I just sent you a non-agenda public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we are recording. We have been the whole time. And it looks like. Looks like we're only missing Director DeDina.
All right, so we're just coming back from our, this is a meeting of the San Diego Community Power, and we're just coming back from our closed session. That started at 3:30, and I'm going to turn this over to our General Counsel Ryan Baron to report out from the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing to report.
All right, so closed, closed session is adjourned, and we're going to move to open session. All right, so this is the regular meeting of the Board of Directors for San Diego Community Power. It's October 28th. And we are just, while we're a little bit over start time, it's 5:20. And so I'd like to welcome everyone here and call us to order. Kimberly, can we do a roll call?
Yes, Director Weber.
Here.
Director DeDina. Director Montgomery Step. Vice Chair Padilla.
Here.
Chair Mosca.
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Perfect. All right, well, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, are there any changes to the posted agenda?
No.
Do we have any members of the public that wish to comment on items that are not on our agenda but within the jurisdiction of this, this board?
We have two hands for you, Steph, this time.
Perfect, let's call on us.
William Powers, you should be able to unmute yourself. And you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. This is Bill Powers, Consulting Engineer and board member of the Protect Our Communities Foundation. To begin, I want to thank San Diego Community Power for writing an amicus brief last summer in support of the Protect Our Communities lawsuit against the California Public Utilities Commission over the issue of CCA customer exit fees. We did not prevail, but we definitely appreciated the support. These comments focus on a different matter, which is the procurement procedures followed by STCP in awarding power purchase agreements. By way of background, I was an appointee to the City of San Diego Task Force to develop the city's climate action plan, which identified community choice energy as the right vehicle to get San Diego to 100% clean energy by 2035. I was the person in 2013 to ask the mayor to use his strong mayor authority to sign off on getting customer data from STGNE so we could do a CCA feasibility study. I wrote a local solar roadmap for STCP to consider using in May 2020, which focuses on cost-effective, large-scale rooftop and parking lot solar in the JPA cities. I briefed STCP's Community Advisory Committee on the roadmap at its second meeting in June 2020. The STCP request for proposals that went out in June 2020 indicated a preference for local projects located within or near the JPA cities. I can assure you that none of the activists in San Diego area that fought for community choice energy over many years would consider projects in Riverside County, Imperial County, or Hacoma Hot Springs as local projects providing local economic benefits. Protect Our Communities Foundation joined with Hacoma community members in an unsuccessful attempt to stall Protect Our Communities Foundation joined with Hacoma community members in an unsuccessful attempt to stall the JVR Hacoma Solar Permit at the County Board of Supervisors. Why? Supervisor Joel Anderson summed it up well in this quote from an August 18th KPBS article titled Supervisors OK Large Solar Project in Hacoma Hot Spring. Residents object. Supervisor Joel Anderson, in whose district the project will be located, stressed that Baywa RE must have an equity plan for residents. Too often, we've allowed affluent communities to step on weaker communities, and it's not right, he said. Protect Our Communities filed a Public Records Act request with STCP in mid-September with the objective of understanding better the procurement processes at STCP. Our perspective is more that of a concerned uncle than an opponent. STCP staff has indicated STCP will begin to provide documents on November 8th and will continue providing documents every four weeks thereafter. I would be grateful if the board could direct staff to respond as comprehensively as possible to the PRA request on November 8th. So Protect Our Communities Foundation can proceed with its review. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Our next comment is from Brooke J. Brooke, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right. Good evening, Chair Mosca and Board of Directors. My name is Brooke, and I live in the city of San Diego. I've been following STCP since its inception. I sadly was not able to make it to last month's meeting, but I saw the recording of the meeting. I want to thank Joyce Lane for her comments and echo what she said about promoting your current Chief Operating Officer, Cody Hooven, to CEO. I want to ask why the board is wasting its time and money doing a national search for a CEO when it has a perfectly qualified and capable woman among its staff. I can't help but wonder if gender is playing a role here. Considering the makeup of the board, I can't help but think it's some form of unconscious or even conscious sexism is at play. From an outsider's perspective, five men are standing in the way of Ms. Hooven, who did all the work to establish SDCP, served it as Executive Director at one point, and this very board was going to make her CEO. I was looking forward to being an SDCP customer, but I cannot support a mandatory organization, ECP. I hope the board is given, if you're listening, if you are not promoted, I encourage you to take your skills and talent elsewhere, somewhere that will value your leadership. I'd like to thank everyone present for listening, and I see the rest of my time.
Thank you, Brooke. There's no more hands raised at this time, and there's no written public comments.
Well, perfect. Thank you so much, and thank you to the public speakers today. I did want to add that, that we are, we had, we set up an ad hoc committee last meeting, last month, to pursue the executive recruiter, hire executive recruiter, and also search for our next CEO. According to our joint powers authority agreement, it needs to be a competitive process. And so that's what we're, we're following our JPA agreement to ensure that there's a competitive process. And there is an ad hoc committee that's set up to hire an executive recruiter and then interview folks for the role of CEO. All right, let's move to our consent calendar, since that's, that's it for public comments. We have four items on our consent calendar. The minutes, Back Office Matrix and Dashboard Monthly Update, Approval of the Community Advisory Committee Fiscal Year 2021, 2022 Work Plan, and Approvals of Findings to Continue Holding Remote Teleconference Meetings Pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. Any, any comments on these items?
Chair, we do have one hand raised at this time.
All right, do we have any board member comments in this?
My apologies.
All right, and you said, Megan, we have one public comment on this item?
Oh, it looks like they lowered their hand. So, no, they've raised it. Okay, we have one public comment.
Perfect. We'll recognize that member of the public now.
Okay, Alex, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm so, so sorry. I had raised my hand before when Brooke was commenting. Can I still add my comments at that time, at this time?
On the consent calendar, what was your, what was your comment regarding?
The, the CEO position.
All right, so that's a general comment. Sure, why don't, why don't you have three, three minutes to make a general comment?
Okay, yeah, I, yeah, I usually don't, don't speak out during these things. But Burke's comment really did like speak with me because I do agree that there might be some form of unconscious sexism happening here. Like, I do feel like there's a qualified woman that, that might be overlooked for the job, and I absolutely validate the competitive process. I honestly would expect nothing less from, you know, from the organization and company. But yeah, I, I just really, really want to emphasize, like, I'm sick and tired of qualified women being overlooked for leadership positions. It's happened to me. It's happened to my girlfriends. And yeah, I would just really, 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 really love if they were considered, if Ms. Hooven was considered. I see the rest of my time.
All right, thank you, Alex. Any other public comments on the consent calendar? All right, I'm going to bring.
There's no hands raised, and there's no written comments.
All right, perfect. I'm going to bring it back to the Board of Directors for comments or a motion. I did want to say that, I didn't want to say to the Community Advisory Committee, thank you for, for putting your, your work plan together. And I look forward to working with you guys as we start the new year and we, we start strategic planning and, and hope that every one of you are going to be part of the, the strategic planning, and we'll put the goals together for the organization for the new year, and then, and then perhaps even adjust that work plan to ensure that, that whatever the work plan is, 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 is consistent with the goals of the organization. But I did want to say thank you to the Community Advisory Committee for putting their work plan together so quickly. And with that, I will entertain a motion on the consent counter. I'll move the consent calendar. This is a member Baber. So we have a motion by Director Baber. Do we have a second on this consent counter? And we have a and a second by Director DeDina? Perfect, let's vote.
Okay, Board Member Baber, how do you vote? Board Member DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, I'm, I.
Board Member Montgomery Step, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
Okay, we're on to item number five, which is the first item on our regular agenda, and that is review of draft amended and restated joint powers agreement. And is this, I'm sorry, I don't have who on staff is going to take this.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, Ryan Baron, General Counsel. I will, I'll go ahead and kick us off.
Great.
All right, good evening, Chair, Board Members, Ryan Baron, General Counsel. Item number five before you today is a review of the draft amended and restated joint powers agreement that's in your packet. The recommended action today is to discuss the edits that are before you in the JPA agreement, and then consider directing staff to provide a notice to the member agencies, including the new member agencies, a copy of the draft, and then any conforming changes to the bylaws, and then place this on a future agenda for final approval. Next slide, please. Want to give you a little bit of history here. As you know, on October 1st, 2019, the JPA was formed. On November, it's 21st, the slide's actually incorrect, November 21st, 2019, the JPA changed its name in a, in a formal amendment. And then on June 24th, 2021, an ad hoc committee was formed to discuss taking on new members and amend the JPA agreement and the bylaws accordingly. And so the ad hoc committee has met, and what's in your packet tonight is the suggested changes to clarify, basically minor changes to the JPA agreement and make some clarifications that we've talked about over the last year, year and a half, as well as make changes for the new members coming on. Next slide, please. So I'll give you an overview of those, of those changes. But first, the procedures for amending the JPA or the bylaws are up on the screen. Article, excuse me, 10, Section 2 of the bylaws requires the board to consider the amendments at an open and public meeting. Then the board may direct the CEO to provide written notice to the member agencies of the proposed amendments at least 30 days prior to adoption. So JP amendment does not have to go back to the members for formal approval. The board itself can do that, but it does have to give notice at least 30 days prior, and that's done tonight by a majority vote, should you decide to do that. And that notice, of course, would not only include your five member agencies, but also the county of San Diego and National City. And then after 30 days has expired, you can approve any amendments, but that must be done by a two-thirds vote. Next slide, please. So I'll go through some of the amendments. Most of them are minor. Well, the first one's a big one. It's incorporating the name change that you all did. We did not take, there was an amendment to the JPA, and this is simply now going to amend everything and restate it. So one of the key items is to clean that up and do the name change. Recital number one will be updated to clarify the history of the JPA, including that amendment. Exhibit F is going to be added to add a template signature page, as well as the signature pages of the two new member agencies when they sign. Also, as you know, that there is a weighted vote in the JPA called the Voting Shares Vote. And I'll get to the next slide about how that works. But it's generally based on calculating your annual energy usage by member agency. So your load, and that's updated every year. This amendment is going to clarify that that calculation's going to be updated every calendar year or, or calculated based on the calendar year and not calculated based on the fiscal year. Next slide, please. I think the, the most material change is an update to the Voting Shares Vote section. Most CCA JPAs have an alternative weighted vote where multiple directors can request a vote in lieu of what we call an equal vote or a majority vote. For San Diego Community Power, it's slightly different, although it's, it's the same general concept. If there is a majority vote that takes place, three or more directors can request this weighted vote or voting shares vote in an attempt to nullify the majority vote. And that was put in, that, that's put in place for any larger members who have differences of opinion or maybe in the nays on the majority vote. The proposal before you is that if there are, to, to change the number of directors as you grow. So if there are, the proposal is that there are eight or more directors, that number would change from three to one less than a quorum of the board. So for instance, if you have eight or nine member agencies, you need at least five members present for, to, to kick off the meeting and vote. This would be one short of that, so you would need at least four directors to call for a voting shares vote. And the, the idea here that was discussed in the committee and among General Counsel and staff was that to make the threshold more meaningful, obviously, as you grow, if keep it at two or three directors, it's much easier to call a weighted vote on a variety of different issues. To my knowledge, there's only been one, maybe two weighted votes in the history of CCA, and I have not participated in that, so it has not happened on my watch, but the increase here is geared toward making that threshold slightly more meaningful, so it would go up. So if you have 10 directors, then there would be, you need a quorum of six, so one less than that would be five for the weighted vote. And that would be updated annually by March 1st, which is already in the JPA agreement, but also when new members are added. Next slide, please. Currently, there's an election of a chair and vice chair. The JPA amendments would clarify that this election would occur at the beginning of the calendar year, not the beginning of the fiscal year, and that's to better align with member appointments with the, the general election, and as new elected officials come on to your member agencies and, and come on to this board. The Chair, Vice Chair will continue to serve for one year with the clarification here being, or until a successor is elected. We also had a discussion, I think the first or second meeting that I was General Counsel to, as to whether alternate directors can serve on the Finance and Risk Management Committee. Currently, Alternate Director Humora serves on that committee, and this would clarify that, yes, they can, which is consistent with the bylaws that we have now. And my final note, and I'll, I'll turn it back to the Chair, is to clarify that if you vote on these changes tonight, or any changes that you direct staff to, to notice the cities with, we will make clarifying and conforming changes to the bylaws. So the amendments to the JP agreement and the bylaws will be sent out to the member agencies, including the new member agencies simultaneously for the 30-day period. And with that, I'm open for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Any questions from the board members? Clarifications? Megan, do we have any members of the public that wish to comment on this item?
Yes, we have, I believe, three written comments, and we have three hands raised, hand raised at this time. Did you want to do the written comments first, or would you like to do the, the speakers first?
Either way that you're comfortable with.
Okay, let's go ahead and do the speakers first. Tera, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Megan. Good evening, Chair Mosca and Directors. I was the Community Advisory Committee member selected to be on the SDCP Search Committee last year. While I wasn't a part of the final selection process, I was informed that the board ultimately selected Cody Hooven as the top candidate. She was unable to take the position due to a potential technicality with the JPA. With the JPA being amended to accommodate National City and the county, I'd like to suggest changing one other word, the word shall to may, to reflect what Silicon Valley Clean Energy has in its JPA. It reads, "The board may appoint a CEO instead of the board shall appoint a CEO." To my understanding, this minor change would give Cody a chance to apply again this time. She's gained additional experience that's been invaluable as the COO of San Diego Community Power that would make her an even better CEO today than when she was the top candidate last year. She's a trusted member of the community, the staff, she's aligned with San Diego Community Power's vision, and I think she'd be a fantastic CEO. SDCP shouldn't limit any qualified candidates from a client, from applying. And I also hope that you allow one CAC member to join the committee this time as well. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Tara, and thank you for all the work you do on Community Advisory Committee as well. Thank you.
Our next comment is from Karina Gonzalez. Karina, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Chair Mosca and Board Members. My name is Karina Gonzalez, and I am a resident of Chula Vista. The JPA being amended in order to accommodate the new members provides the perfect opportunity to modify the verbiage about the CEO process so that the most qualified candidates can be considered. During the last meeting, there were multiple comments from members of the community that wanted Cody Hooven to be considered. SDCP will be one of the largest CCE programs in the state and is only going to continue to grow. We need to ensure that we have a local leader who will champion the issues that cities and community members care about. I also encourage you to invite a Community Advisory Committee member to be on the CEO Search Committee so that the community has a voice in this important process that will have a big impact on SDCP. Thank you.
Thank you, Karina. Our next speaker is Matthew Vasilakis. Matthew, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Directors. This is Matthew Vasilakis with Climate Action Campaign, here, here to support these amendment changes to bring the county and National City into SDCP. These are exciting new members to the program, and we look forward to partnering with them on building a clean electricity future together. Additionally, we recommend the board include the very minor JPA amendment that would permit your Chief Operating Officer and last year's leading CEO candidate, Cody Hooven, to apply to the competitive CEO recruitment process. Since SDCP's establishment, Cody has only further demonstrated her exceptional leadership skills and dedication to achieving what was unthinkable even a half decade ago, the creation and successful launch of a regional community choice energy program in San Diego County. Her disqualification last year was based merely on a technicality, and we hope the board will remedy this issue by amending the JPA just as another CCE program has done before. Cody's proven leadership, respect within the CCE world, clean industry, clean energy industry and the community makes this an easy pitch for us. Thank you, and we look forward to working with this important effort. Please, let's be fair to Cody. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Our next speaker is, let's see, Brooke J. Brooke, you should be able to unmute yourself. Brooke, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Fantastic. Thank you. So I would just like to simply second the comments of the previous speakers, Karina, Terry, and Matthew. Please make this amendment to the JPA concerning Ms. Huben. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Our next comment, our next speaker is Alex C. Alex, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I also want to second what Karina Gonzalez, Tara Hammond, and Matthew Vasilakis has said. Please, please make these changes to the JPA to allow Ms. Hoover to apply all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alex. That concludes all of the live speakers. So go ahead and move to the written comments. Our first comment is from Sheila Ott. Good evening, Chair Mosca and Directors. My name is Sheila Ott, and I'm with Hammond Climate Solutions. With amendment and reinstatement, sorry, with amendment and restatement of the joint powers agreement today, I would like to suggest the language be changed to say, "The board may appoint a CEO versus shall." Cody Huben, who was selected as the top candidate by this SDCP CEO search last search committee last year, was not able to fulfill the role due to a technicality, and changing the verbiage would allow her to apply again for the position. Beyond being selected as a top candidate last year, she has gained more experience since then that would contribute to her qualifications and make her an excellent candidate. SDCP should not limit any candidates from applying who meet the qualifications. Thank you so much for your time. Our next comment is from Eddie Price. Eddie Price, Chair of the Community Advisory Committee, San Diego Community Power. Greetings. I would like to implore the board to address and amend the wording in the JPA that prohibits Cody Huben from applying for the CEO position of our CCA, since changes in the JPA must be addressed anyway at this time because of our growth. It's my understanding that the two board members are adamantly opposed to this small legal change of wording in the JPA, which I find ludicrous and appalling. It appears sexist and disrespectful. If we truly want the best person for the CEO position, then we need to allow the most intimately knowledgeable person to at least be able to apply. If we are to be a leader in the CCA world, we need to do what leaders do individually and collectively. This type of behavior and action epitomizes systematic oppression, and I'm hoping we, you, are better than that. Also, it pains me to think how true equity communities of concern and people of color would stay on these conversations if Councilmember Montgomery Stapp and/or I were in them. Sincerely, and with all due respect, Eddie Price. And that concludes the comments for item five.
Great. Thank you. Thank you to all the public speakers. Let's bring it back to the board. Any discussion or any comments on the amendments before us? And what we're doing is with the vote tonight, we would move this to the member agencies so that they can view this and give any kind of feedback that they have. Is that correct, Ryan?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Any comments on the amendments before us? Director Montgomery Stapp?
Thank you, Chair. For Mr. Baron, I just want to just briefly, if you could, go over the portion of the JPA that will be amended with regard to the weighted votes and kind of what we have now and what will change. Just one more time for me, please.
Yeah, absolutely. Could I go back to the previous slide, please? Thank you. Sorry, I abbreviated this, so it wouldn't, there wouldn't be too much on the screen. There's a pretty lengthy passage in the JPA agreement that deals with the voting shares vote, and that is a weighted vote. And in the San Diego Community Power JPA, three or more directors, after a majority vote is passed, can call for a weighted vote to try to nullify the majority vote. And this was put in place at the time, I believe, where if there are members with a larger load, or, you know, quote, bigger members, they could outvote a majority vote on an item of interest to them. And I believe that at the time, there was a lot of discussion about the city of San Diego and the size of its load, and there was a compromise here where the weight of San Diego would be capped at, you know, forty-nine percent, et cetera. None of that is actually being proposed to be modified. I'm just giving that as background. The primary change here is that currently, three or more directors can request this alternate vote. So that's a pretty big threshold for a board of five. You see that more often, you see often in CCA JPAs, it's two or more. But a lot of the more established ones have larger boards. And so it's easier to call for a weighted vote, although the votes get saturated the more you have members come on. And so here, it is a pretty high burden to have three or more directors call for, to nullify a majority vote. And so as you get bigger and have five, six, seven, eight, nine member agencies, the thought is that if you leave it at three or more directors, the threshold may not be as meaningful. So the committee discussed increasing that, and the proposal here is once you hit eight or more agencies, then that would change from three or more directors to one less than a quorum. So it's not the easiest way to put it, because there's a lot of math here if we ever get involved, and I'll have to do a lot of calculating with the clerk, but the, so up to eight member agencies, three or more directors can request a weighted vote, but once you hit eight or more agencies, then it's one less than a quorum. So if, when you have eight or nine agencies, the quorum required is five, and then therefore you would need four directors to call for that weighted vote. So it's only proposed in certain situations, and it would, it cannot be used at any time, like other CCAs, it can be used at any time. Here, it can only be used to nullify a majority vote. So that's the proposal here, and then we propose updating it annually, which is actually already in the JPA, but updating it as the new members are added in terms of calculating their load. So once the county of San Diego and National City are formally on the board, that exhibit will change in the back of the JPA, updating everybody's voting shares. And I don't, I don't have those numbers with me tonight, but we did provide the most up-to-date numbers in the exhibit as to the current five members with, I believe, the city continuing to be at forty-nine percent, Chula Vista at twenty-eight point four five percent, Encinitas at nine point three six percent, La Mesa at eight point seven nine percent, and Imperial Beach at four point four percent.
Okay, okay. Well, I really appreciate that breakdown and explanation. Thank you. I just want to say this in closing with my comments, always, as always, acknowledging the public voice, the community voice. I think as we have gone through this process, and I've been honored to be a part of it, we have always uplifted the community voice. And I just want to acknowledge what has been said here and what we are hearing. I think it's extremely important to me, and we I think the board is committed to just providing, you know, as much information as we can moving forward in all of these, all of the processes that we have to tackle as a new organization. So with that, I'll close it out. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Director Baber?
I just want to thank Ryan and the team and the subcommittee that worked, we all worked on this to come up with these compromises. On the weighted vote, it really is a well-crafted compromise between, with two problems. On one hand, we never want to have a body where a few members, especially the ones who are the biggest and powerful, can override and overpower the smaller ones. On the other hand, you also can't have the tyranny of the majority because the bigger, the bigger ones are carrying more of the fiscal consequence. Remember, this isn't population, it's about load. So going back and forth, this was, this was a good compromise. We could have kept it at three, but, you know, if we had kept it, that would have had its own problems, or we could have raised the proportion even higher, and that would have had some problem. This is a decent compromise, and I'm saying that because I come from one of the smallest cities. And so, you know, sure, maybe there could have been some tactical advantages I could have gained from my smaller city and somebody's, but I don't think it would have been best for the community. This is a good balance for the community, both for the ones that have to carry the biggest load, primarily city of San Diego, and then the ones who carry a small load like La Mesa. So I appreciate everybody's willing to compromise and work this out.
Thank you, Director Baber. Vice Chair Padilla?
I just want to echo both Director Baber and Director Monica Montgomery Stapp, impressing my gratitude for the collaborative effort, and also just to reiterate for the record that, and for the public, that this board is committed to inclusion and transparency, and it is committed to involving the voices of our community stakeholders and of our staff in providing input into our decision-making in terms of our organizational structure, how we move forward. It is also, I think, important, given some of the comments that were made earlier today, to point out that oftentimes, well-meaning members of the public believe they are in possession of facts and information, which ultimately, in truth, they may not have all of the facts and information. And unfortunately, because of a little thing called the law, this board is not at liberty to discuss in public elements, all elements of our decision-making. And so we're left in the undesirable position of having people often speculating, believing they're in possession of information, and speaking and acting based on that. And I just want to say, insofar that there's any feeling that this board, to a member, isn't committed to respecting diversity and inclusion and transparency, I'm just going to say very clearly for myself, and I know for all of us, that we're very much committed to that, even if we can't sometimes take actions or vote in ways that everyone will agree that we should. But we are doing our best to stand up an organization at the end of the day that is going to serve this community and serve it well. And I'm committed to that, and I know that all my colleagues are committed to that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well said. Thank you, Vice Chair Padilla. And I did want to echo the comments of Director Baber and say that this was, in terms of the amendments, well, there are several amendments, but the substantive amendment that's before us, that this was a very good compromise, and hopefully we'll never have to use the weighted vote, and we haven't had to use it hence far, and hopefully we'll never have to use it. But I do think that this basic, this compromise gets to the spirit of what we originally negotiated when we formed the JPA, which is that it would be three members. And so as we grow, that does change, and so this modification does keep us kind of in that same spirit. And I would also just echo, I'm not as eloquent as Vice Chair Padilla, but I would just say that, in addition to everything he said, which, you know, you know, he has been at the forefront of social justice and equity for many years. And I would say that, you know, to my heart and core, I'm all about social justice and equity and fairness, and this organization was born out of that, and we represent those values. My community is all about progress and progressive values, and so I represent those values on this board. And so, and so I'm very thankful for the comments that the public has made, and we are striving every day to deliver on every one of our goals of renewable energy, local distributed generation, good-paying jobs, better environment, and equity and social justice and inclusion for our communities, the member agencies that we represent. So if there are no more comments or questions, then we have amendments before us.
I'll move the recommended amendments, Mr. Chair.
Perfect. All right. So we have a motion by Director Baber.
A second?
All right, we have a second by Vice Chair Padilla. Let's vote.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Aye.
Board Member Dina, how do you vote?
Dina, aye.
Board Member Montgomery Stapp, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
Perfect. Let's move to item number six, which is the next item on our agenda. It's approval of collections and delinquency policy. Lucas is a staff member that's going to take this item. Lucas?
Good evening, Chair Mosca and the Directors. Today before you, I'm actually going to present on collections and delinquency policy draft that we have before the board. The first section of my presentation will cover the objectives of a delinquency policy. Second, I will actually walk the board through the state of arrogances in our region. Thirdly, I will cover programs that are available to customers to assist with arrogances. And then finally, I will conclude with the highlights of the proposed collections and delinquency policy draft before you. So first things first, what is our objectives by having the board approve and adopt a collections slash delinquency policy tonight? One, it is, it provides a framework for us as staff and our back office service provider to better serve our customers, treat them with respect and dignity, and to set clear expectations on the handling of past due customer charges. Secondly, it minimizes and mitigates bad debts for the overall long-term financial viability, resiliency, and competitiveness of SDCP. Next slide, please. Before you, this evening, this graph denotes or depicts the state of arrogances in our region. We're tracking, or the CPC has actually been tracking arrogances across all IOUs from the pre-pandemic timeframe of January 2020 all the way through August 2021. Specifically for our IOU, which is in green, you can clearly see that pre-pandemic, so around January, arrogances were around four hundred million. But then, fast forward almost fifteen months later, arrogances across all customer types increased dramatically to almost one point two billion dollars. And obviously, this is a direct function of the pandemic. People lost lives, people lost their livelihoods, and it reflected in the arriage balances growth over the course of the pandemic. Moving over to the next slide, this slide right here captures the subset of customers that are on low-income programs, CAREAFA, and the same trajectory is also being realized or is being seen in this subset of customers wherein for our specific IOU, SDGNE, the arrogances also increased materially over the course of the pandemic. Now, what does this mean for us as an organization? Next slide, please. So this just means that a lot of our customers are actually saddled with arrogances as a function of the pandemic. However, it's not to say that there aren't any programs out there to assist our customers in getting the requisite help and assistance to being able to offset some of these arrogances. There are a number of programs at the federal, state, and local levels that assist customers with the daunting task of reducing their arrogances accrued as a function of the pandemic. First program is LEHYPE, or the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. This program is administered by CST, and it offers up to a thousand dollars in financial aid for SDGNE customer bills. The next program, and in my opinion, one of the most generous programs, is AMP, or the Arriage Management Payment Program. This program allows customers to offset arrogances anywhere between five hundred dollars through eight thousand dollars, provided that they pay their current charges in full, and they would actually get a forgiveness one twelfth of their arriage balance accrued for the next twelve months. In other words, they can offset up to eight thousand dollars if they make timely payment of their current charges going forward. There is actually a cost recovery mechanism associated with this program. In other words, all the load-serving entities, including the IOUs and the CCAs participating- In other words, all the load-serving entities, including the IOUs and the CCAs participating in the program are made whole through that cost recovery mechanism. The third program that's currently available, and we are working very closely with CSD on, is the California Arrears Payment Program, also known as CAP. There is actually a billion-dollar allocation from the state, wherein $694.5 billion have been allocated to IOUs and CCAs within California. And for this program in particular, customers do not have to apply for it. CSD is going to disburse these funds over to the IOUs, and in some select cases, directly to the CCAs to help offset some of the arrears covered from March of last year through June 15th of 2021. Moving over to the next slide, please. There's also a percentage of income payment plan. That is a pilot that was just approved by the CPC on October 8th. What this program does is it actually allows customers, who for the most part are on fixed income, to know exactly what to expect in terms of their bills going forward. The bills for this pilot program will be capped at 4% of their monthly household income, such that it allows for customers to know exactly what to project in terms of their bill going forward. And last but not least, the CPC has approved automatic extended payment plans for all customers, residential and non-residential. Wherein, before any disconnection process can commence, customers with arrears balances would actually be automatically placed by the IOUs on extended payment plans for residential, it's 24 months, and for non-residential, it can be up to 24-plus months going forward. And again, all of this is to aid customers who are actively trying to get out of the effects of the pandemic, such that they will be able to offset their arrears balances going forward. All of this information is actually housed on our website. We do have a dedicated page that essentially customers can go to and find information on all of the programs that are currently available to be able to assist them in offsetting their arrears. Next slide, please. So now, getting into the gist of our proposed collections and delinquency policy that is before the board tonight. We do have two sections to this policy. One, that's specifically going to be dealing with active customers, meaning customers that are currently being served by San Diego Community Power. And so for this section of the policy, we will recognize a balance as being delinquent if it exceeds $250, regardless of customer type, whether you're residential or not. And with that, customers will receive a late payment notification at the 60-day mark once that balance has been deemed to be delinquent from our perspective. In comparison, SDGNE, through their Rule 11, which deals with discontinuance of service, they recognize a balance to be delinquent for residential customers 19 days after presentment. And for non-residential customers, 15 days after presentment. Again, as of right now, all of this continuance or all this connection mechanisms have been halted, again, as a function of the CAP or the California Arrears Management Program process, to allow for that process to play out before the SDGNE discontinuance cycle commence, which will be sometime next year. But that's not to say that once we get back to steady state or normal course of operations, that that specific discontinuing cycle will not be forthcoming. So from our perspective, we're going to give customers more lead time, and we are going to send them a late payment notification at the 60-day mark, once that balance has been deemed to be delinquent. And on that late payment notification, we will articulate all the programs and all the assistant mechanisms that customers can sign up for to be able to offset the arrears balances. And assuming that a customer signs up for any sort of a payment plan, therefore, we are going to no longer consider that balance as delinquent, simply because this customer, in good faith, has made an attempt or is making an active attempt to offset their arrears. Now, if, let's say, we send, you know, the first late payment notification at the 60-day mark, and that doesn't elicit any sort of feedback from the customer, we are also going to send a second late payment notification at the 90-day mark, or the 90-day aged mark, essentially telling them that, hey, you do have a delinquent balance here, and these are the programs available through which, you know, you can sign up for and get the requisite help to make sure that you're not falling behind on your bills. And assuming that doesn't still yield a response from the customer, we're going to give them 30 days thereafter. And after 30 days, what will happen is we will actually return that account back to bundle service. Now, the importance of CCAs returning customers to bundle service is because in the framework of the CC operations, we do not have the power to discontinue service. Only the IOUs have that power. In other words, we will return those accounts that have not made any attempt to make payment arrangements or pay the balance in full after the 30-day notice expires from the last late payment notification. And from there, the IOU will more than likely institute their discontinuance rule and proceed with discontinuance of service, starting, obviously, next year going forward. Again, the one aspect of the policy that we definitely would like for the board to see is the one that's actually bolded. Wherein, at any point in our delinquency cycle, if a customer does actually get on a payment plan, we will no longer consider this customer to be delinquent. Moving on to the next slide, please. So this portion here deals with an inactive customer, meaning a customer that used to be on our service, but for whatever reason has either moved out or is no longer taking service from us, but who actually also has a delinquent balance. Typically, SDGNE as a bill agent and a payment collections agent on both of our behalf, meaning for our charges and theirs, they would essentially go out and still follow up with the customer wanting to collect on the unpaid balance. But once that unpaid balance reaches 145 days, they will no longer, they will no longer follow up, or they will no longer seek payment from the customer. At that point, they will return the uncollectible balance to us. And what we're saying here is, as part of the policy that's before you, when SDGNE returns that uncollected balance back to San Diego Community Power, we're actually going to analyze, and if the return balance is less than $20, we're going to automatically write that off. We're not going to follow up with the customer in any circumstance if the arrears balance is $20 or less. Now, if it's $20 or more, what we will do is we may refer that to a collections agency. We will, assuming that the board adopts this policy, we will move ahead with a request for proposals from collections agencies that better align with our mission, simply because I'll be the first to tell you that collections disproportionately affect folks from the communities of concern, some of whom do look exactly like me. And so what we're trying to align here is obviously the long-term financial viability of San Diego Community Power, while also being very cognizant of the fact that delinquencies and subsequent collections process disproportionately affect people of color. And what we're trying to do here is strike that elusive balance between between having a collections policy that has a human element to it, while at the same time serving the overall viability, rather, the long-term viability of San Diego Community Power as an organization. So for any balance that is $20 or more that SDGNE is no longer collecting on, and that they have returned back to us, we will actually refer, or we may refer it to a collections agency. And assuming that, you know, the customer hasn't paid 180 days following the initiation of the collections process, the collections agency may file a credit reporting information on the customer. Again, we're not saying that they will, we're saying that they may, and we will be very much intimately involved in the process to make sure that we're doing what is right for our customer base. And then last but not least, there will be no accrued interest on any portion of the delinquent balance in the entirety of our collections slash delinquency handling process. And that actually concludes my presentation for tonight. I will stop here and take any questions, comments, or additional feedback from the board.
Thank you, Lucas, and thank you for the presentation. I, for one, agree with the policy as you've stated. I do have a couple of questions. One is the billion dollars that you had in your presentation. How is that allocated to the folks that have arrears, specifically with our IOU, specifically our customers?
That's an excellent question, Chair Mosca. So the CAP funds is what I believe you're referring to. And the provisions of CAP as a program is only, the dollars are only applicable to, they call it the covered period, and that covered period runs from March 15th, when the shutdown in the state started, through June 15th. In other words, from our perspective, a lot of, we, San Diego Community Power does not have a lot of exposure, simply because it's for residential customers. We're actively not serving residential customers yet, until February of 2022. And so we've worked very closely with SDGNE to determine what our exposure is based on the requirements and provisions of CAP as a program. And our overall exposure ended up being only $13. In other words, SDGNE is going to get the large share of the arrears balance dollar disbursement from CSD. And what that will do for us is, by the time February rolls in and we commence our Phase 3 enrollment, these customers, especially on the residential side, will come over to our service with less arrears than what currently stands right now.
All right, perfect. So you got to write what I was thinking is, you know, I was going to ask about the, how they actually distribute it, just kind of really about knowing how much our customers would be bringing over to us. You answered that question perfectly. And then the other question is about the outreach. So when we, when our residential customers come over, are we going to, are we hiring folks that are going to actively, you know, as we have customers that get behind on their bills, will we actively reach out to them and let them know the different programs that are available so that they can get on a plan and they can get the assistance that they need and that's available to them? It's important to me that we have folks on our team that are actively reaching out to our customers that appear to be, you know, hitting a hard time and getting behind. And so that it doesn't become a situation where they're more in arrears and can't afford it, and it's being pushed back to SDGNE, and then maybe even comes back to us in a kind of customer in a collection situation, which would be awful.
Indeed. So what we're actually planning right now is, obviously, first things first, we're working with SDGNE to determine how much of the CAP funds allocation they'll receive relative to the residential customers that will be rolling over to our service, starting in February of next year. We haven't seen the data yet, and quite honestly, I don't suspect that we will see this data until the disbursement of the funds, which is slated for January, right before the residential customers start rolling over to our service. But to answer your question with regards to the outreach, I think what we're planning with regards to general community outreach, and then specifically as it pertains to the programs, we are going to utilize the member city communication channels with customers to obviously present, you know, what sort of service customers should expect as they roll over to us. And then subsequently, mechanisms or pathways through which they can qualify for specific programs. And we will, and we've been part of the community engagements already. I think a few of us were actually in Encinitas last month at the EcoFest, talking to customers and being in communities, responding to questions, and that we will still take forth into Phase 3 and beyond. And so I think the answer to your question, Chair Mosca, is, yes, we are creating plans for Phase 3 that will essentially capture all aspects of engagement with our communities in which we live in.
All right, good. I mean, I think that broad-based messaging is important. So broadly speaking, people understand the programs that can help them out if they need that help. And but I think being able to understand, having data readily available about our customers, our residential customers specifically, and about any kind of hardships that they're hitting as soon as possible, and being able to target that messaging to those folks that can actually use some of these programs would be, I think, very important for us. And I also agree that to the extent that that they come back from SDGNE, if I'm tracking well with what you're saying, when they come back, if they come back for the, you know, if they get into a delinquent stage, they go off to, before they get into that delinquency status, they owe us some money. They then go back to becoming SDGNE bundled customer, and then SDGNE is trying to collect. If they're not able to collect on some of it, then it comes, the delinquent portion, the arrears portion that's owed to SDCP comes back to us, and then we have the choice of pursuing it. And under your policy, I agree with your policy, and I agree that we should basically be ensuring that we're basically trying to contract with an agency that fits our values as well. So thank you for saying that, and for going in that direction. Any comments or questions for Lucas? Director Baber?
So, Lucas, a few things. First of all, thank you for bringing this forward. I know you worked hard on it. The item on the agenda says, approve a collection and delinquent accounts handling policy. And I'm assuming you're putting this as a draft, because we should have this, but this, we're in a position here where we can give you feedback, and if it's significant enough, you could take back our feedback and then bring us another draft next month, right? You're asking for our input on this, correct?
Correct. I think it's input, and if the board seems, or rather, the board finds the draft as currently written acceptable, then the request tonight is for the board to vote to adopt it.
Okay. Lucas, you did a great job. I don't find it acceptable as written, but if, can I give you some feedback on where I would find it acceptable as written?
Absolutely.
Just briefly, in less than 60 seconds, philosophy on this. Whenever you go into collections, whenever you file lawsuits against somebody, whenever you pursue them on their credit rating, it's a form of governmental imposed, it's a form of punishment, and when the government does, it's a form of imposed punishment. And we have a long philosophy in our country that we don't punish people for being poor. We don't allow debtors' prisons, for example. And so you always want to be extra tolerant and extra careful when the government is pursuing a debt. And I think that's even more in energy, energy, and I complained about water bills and sewer bills the same way, so don't take it personal. When you're using water or you're using energy, you don't have a choice. It's not a market choice. Everything else where there's a debt collection, I could have bought this item, or I couldn't have bought this item. You functionally have no choice in seeking energy. So I think we have to have a much more generous, gracious, tolerant because of that situation. So I understand the dilemma. What you're saying is, if they don't pay and they don't work it out, they go over to SDGNE. What you're saying is if they don't pay and they don't work it out, they go over to SDG and A. Right? They're not our customer, and then it's up to SDG and A. Don't have any problem with that. But then what, if SDG can't collect, and then you go into everything on your last slide, it's, I'm, would vote for your policy except on the last slide. So look, look at this, Lucas. Any overdue SDPC charges, one hundred and twenty, totaling twenty dollars or more? Twenty dollars seems very low. Let me add one more thing, Luke, so you understand. There's always a danger in collections that you get it wrong. I don't know if it's ever happened to you, but it's happened to me where there's a mistake on this, and once they put you in collections, or when, it's very hard to, to deal with that. And sometimes, guess what? News to the world, governments make mistakes on, on things. So we wanted to be extra tolerant too. So I don't think twenty dollars is high enough. If it was five hundred dollars, I'd be okay. Now, I notice you have a few May things in here, which are okay. And Lucas, if I were giving all judgment to you, I know you'd make the right choices, but you're gonna, we all may not be here, and you may not be here. So I, I would like to tighten this up a little bit. So I think it shouldn't be twenty dollars. I think it should be five hundred, and that would make the next one four ninety-nine. No accrued interest will be charged to any customer account. Agree with that. SDCP, you have will select a local collections agency forces. I would make that one a May. SDCP is not obligated to do it, but they could. So when you say will, that's will as a shall. I, I think that one should be a May. The next line, if a customer is not paid within one hundred and eighty days following the initiation collections process, the collection agency may file credit reporting information on the customer with all applicable agencies. That wouldn't be bad, except credit reporting agencies and collection agencies have a long history of screwing this up. So what's the check and balance? Could you add something that said they may do it with the consent of SDCP? It just, I, collection agencies are not the most trustworthy entities in the history of humans. So I would like some extra protection added to that line. And then the last one, under the guidance of SDCP, the collection agency may be authorized to pursue legal action any customer without staying about seven, seven fifty is too low to go after for legal. I mean, that should be like two thousand to, to pursue legal action. So what is the consequences of what I'm saying? There will be some people who can't pay their debts that we don't collect. But guess what? We're standing with community power, and that's a part of the community. I'm willing to do it. We're not SDG and E. We are not driven by profit to pay our shareholders. So I, I would like you to consider maybe combat next time and look at some higher numbers and consider the things I've said.
Lucas, did you want to respond to any of the, any of the, the points made by Director Baber?
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Director Baber, for your feedback. That is good feedback. And quite honestly, in drafting this policy, you know, I think we all wrestled with this internally. But what we, what you have here before you is actually pretty standard across the CCA landscape. So just to give you a quick, high-level context of where other CCAs stand, I think most, if not all of them, have the similar thresholds. However, there were two CCAs in the state that didn't actually have a, a collection slash delinquency handling policies. In other words, every single time for a non-active customer, wherein the, the IOU is no longer collecting on it, when that receivable was returned back to them, they wrote off the entire balance. But that was before COVID. I've actually had a various conversation with, with, with these CCAs, and they're actually going to their boards, I believe, next year to adopt something similar to what you're seeing here tonight. We can def, I, I think there's one CCA up north that has a limit, rather, the, the threshold is fifty dollars, but there is no other CCA in the state today that has a limit of more than, more than fifty dollars, quite honestly, for an uncollectible balance. So that's not to say that we, we cannot be the pioneers of this. I just wanted to provide that high-level context in terms of what other CCAs are doing in the state and what collections slash delinquency handling policies that are out there, wherein, you know, we've been in constant communication with our peers to see how they're managing their bad debt. And so pre-COVID, I think, you know, the, the, the debt structure was fine. Post-COVID, it, it's just gotten a little bit out of hand to where the CCAs, generally speaking, are trying to create, and they're trying to strike that balance between, you know, doing what is right for their customers and at the same time doing what is right in terms of their long-term viability.
Lucas, did you want to specifically, Lucas, did you want to specifically note the, the two other points that he made? Was that, how, how did we derive the twenty dollars? And is it feasible, practical to move it up to five hundred? Or, or would you, would you say that in the discussions that, that another amount could, could be set there? Also, the seven hundred and fifty dollars, you know, again, what, what, can you kind of just eliminate what the, the discussion was like at setting that at seven fifty?
A- absolutely. So I think part of, part of our challenge right now, especially with the residential customer base, is we're not actively serving them yet. And so we don't necessarily have the requisite data to know how much of their arrears they're carrying. We, we've already requested that information from SDG and E, and we're working in what their arrears landscape truly looks like. And so the policy as, as written tonight, this is actually taking into consideration what our peers, who have been in existence longer than we have, what they have seen in their operations, you know, especially pre-pandemic state. And what we've seen, generally speaking, is these are the thresholds that they do have. Now, for us, we can definitely reassess. We're not saying that this has to be set in stone. All that we're saying here is, without knowing truly what their arrears landscape looks like for our residential customers, then it's, it's, it's almost us going into twenty twenty-two without knowing what to truly expect. But we, we, there are lessons learned from peers who have been in the space longer than we have, and what they're telling us or what they have crafted as far as their collections and delinquency policies similarly match what you're seeing here tonight. So, you know, to answer Director Baber's other two points, I, I think you're absolutely right. We, we, we can do a better analysis once we have all of the moving facts. Right now, we just don't have those. We're working towards getting them, and our hope here is we will get those before the, the accounts start transitioning over to our service in February and beyond.
Can I, can I respond to Lucas?
Director Baber?
Thank you for that, Lucas. Let me just say, I respect that you've gathered this and matched it against our peers, and that validates its rationality. So I appreciate that. However, just because everyone else is doing something, they may not have, reflect all of your values, and we could be a pioneer or a leader on this. And if we wanted to, which is, you conceded that, right? We could do it differently, but you are saying it's objectively reasonable to follow the peers. Second thing is, you're, you were saying, well, we don't know. So what if we had the higher limits and the, the, the more flexibility I described, and we set a one-year limit on it so that we could see if it works or something like that? If we're trying to figure out whether it works, why do we, why take the low end of the scale? Why not take the high end of the scale, but put a time limit on it? So if, if we totally messed it up after a year, we can fix it.
Thank you, Director Baber. I, I, I agree. We can definitely take this back. And hopefully with better data in the next year, we can definitely come back with, in the interim, a higher limit and make the, the amendments that you've suggested and bring it to the board in November accordingly.
I won't say anything further, but I'd like to hear what the other members of the board think.
Any other comments on this item? Any other board member?
Oh, sorry.
Director DeDina, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand raised, but you could shout out anytime.
No, I'm a member of the Finance Committee, and we discussed this. I, I guess I'm, there's two ways to look at it. One, you know, there's nothing wrong with being like everybody else when it comes to financial management. If it's sound insecure, I guess I would be concerned about doing something that immediately as we start puts the agency in a more problematic role in terms of, you know, having extra debt. So that's all. I think we definitely need to be, maybe there's a middle ground. But, you know, there, there may be a reason why all the other CCAs do this, so.
Director Montgomery, step.
Thank you, Chair. So I want to just ask Lucas, based on Member DeDina's comments just now, you mentioned COVID, and you mentioned how that changed a couple of the CCAs philosophy around this, and now they want to do a policy as well. What is the reason, was there a reason for this number when you talk to the other agencies, other than they're just kind of having this number? Where, where, where is it derived from?
Totally, Director Montgomery, step. I, I think, based on what the other CCAs have learned over the years, is that the twenty-dollar, obviously, anything less than twenty dollars, it's operationally not feasible in terms of, you know, the, the associated costs of, of making the follow-up, et cetera. The twenty-dollar threshold, and I think there are two, if I remember correctly, two CCAs that have a fifty-dollar threshold. That makes sense to follow up on in terms of the operational costs involved, et cetera. And that is the rationale that the CCAs, the existing CCAs have utilized in the past. Now, with regards to the overall delinquency roadmap, rather, the landscape, right? There is actually a CCA that was impacted by the, the, the delinquencies increasing substantially over, over the pandemic period, such that they could not continue operations going forward. That was one of the reasons, based on, 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 on the postmortem that they did. And so from, from, from a high-level perspective, I, I think being conservative while at the same time striking that balance in being able to institute a collections slash delinquency policy that is humanistic, and that does not necessarily affect disproportionately people from communities of concern, which, quite honestly, I, you know, I, I look and, 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 and am one of those, is to create a policy and issue that RFP to a, a collection slash delinquency partner that's going to mimic our values in being able to do what is right for the customer.
Okay. I'll, I, I would say at the very least, more data would help us make a decision that, you know, we can live with on this. I, I do tend to agree with Director Baber that the, these, when looking at the policy, seem to be smaller amounts. I would say especially, even if we don't change the first two bullets, the outstanding balance of seven to hundred and fifty or more is, it's concerning to me, even from a cost-benefit analysis, just, you know, pursuing legal action based off of, of an amount of that sizes would be concerning. So that's, that is where I'm at. I think we can explore this a little bit more.
Lucas, I'm wondering if we can, and I, I do see your interim CEO has his hand up, and, and I'm gonna call you on one, call on you in one second. But Lucas, I'm wondering if we could, I know that we haven't launched, and I know that we're working with the IOU on getting additional data. I'm wondering if, if we put this off for a little bit, whether or not it can be informed by more specific data that we collect about our customers from SDG. And I think it's a prudent policy informed by experience of the other CCEs. And, and as Director DeDina said, that there's nothing wrong with that. You know, it's, 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 it's prudent financial advice. But as you say, we're gonna kind of adjust this to, to get at what we want to with our, our customers. And, and I'm wondering if we can kind of put it off a little bit so that we're able to collect additional data. And I don't know if, Bill, if you want to respond, or Lucas, that you're able to respond to that.
In fact, with one of the questions I was gonna ask him in terms of whether there's a timing issue here, is this something we need to do tonight?
So, thanks, Bill. Yes, there is a timing issue in the sense that we, we are tracking, we're tracking delinquency already. Currently, it's at point nine four percent of our total retail commodity sales year-to-date. But again, and what we've seen is it's tracking upwards. And essentially, having a policy that allows for us to have, so right now, what we have been doing is we're keeping a very close tab on the, the delinquency, and, you know, we're, we're making cold calls, like, hey, you know, because we do have, we do have that relationship with, with the CNI customers or the commercial and industrial customers that we've served as part of our phase one and two. But, but we don't have a policy necessarily. And so, you know, it's just a matter of, because a lot of these customers, we have touching or touch points with them on a monthly cadence. It says, hey, you know, you do have a, a past due balance here that now is creeping up to, you know, being ninety days over, please make arrangements to pay off, off, offline. And, and because we have that relationship. But what we're, what, what, what we're hoping that the board would do is formally adopt a policy or a framework that would allow for us to have a uniform mechanism, especially when we get to almost seven hundred and seventy thousand accounts. We're not gonna have the capacity to call each one of them, right? And so that, that was the, the hope tonight. But again, I mean, I, 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 I understand the feedback received, and we can go back, try to see what those arrears balances look like, especially after the cap funds are applied, and come back to the board. But the, you know, the, the other side of, of, of that is these delinquency balances will be increasing. And what we have generally seen is it's better to catch it when it's small, when the amount is two fifty, as opposed to waiting until the amount becomes two thousand, wherein then it becomes more of an insurmountable challenge, even from a customer perspective, you know, logically speak.
Can I, Joe, can I follow up with something that Lucas said that might help?
Sure.
Lucas, I probably should have said this before, so forgive me. My whole little filibuster was based on viewing residential customers. I don't put the municipal customers or the corporate customers in the same category. Why? Because the law treats them differently. Bankruptcy law treats them differently. They've had, they have different assets. So what I was, what my comments were aimed at is when we get to residential. If you want to, and because we don't have any residential debt right now, because we don't, we don't have the residential customers fully online, is that correct? I'll make sure I'm not overstating this, right? You're talking about debt that, you're talking about debt that came from either municipal or commercial, right?
Correct. As of right now, we're, we're, I think we only have six residential customers that are affiliated with municipal entities.
Okay. My, my speech was about people, individual humans who have to suffer financial hardship. It wasn't about corporate entities. So this policy for corporate entities doesn't bother me. I always thought that you were writing this for both corporate entities and residential. If, if we had a, a more tolerant, a little bit more grace policy for residential, that would also solve the problem I was trying to get to.
I don't think there's a distinction between the customer class like that in terms of the policy.
Why? We would be prohibited from that, from, from separating it by residential and business, Joe? I mean, legally?
I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Do, Lucas, do, do any other CCEs actually separate it, a collection policy for, for their quasi-governmental accounts and, and, and commercial industrial accounts as opposed to the residential?
Some CCEs actually do, Chair Mosca, separate out the residential from the non-residential. And if, if the board would like for us to do that, that should, yeah. We, we can definitely, we can definitely make that distinction more pronounced. that should, yeah, we, we can definitely, we can definitely make that distinction more pronounced and then much more clear. Whereas right now, we haven't, we haven't made that distinction explicitly.
If we do, Lucas, my, my point is that allows us to consider the policy goals we've been discussing, but if you're, but it doesn't hinder your current, you know, fixing your current financial information situation, which you are seem to be worried about. I, I think that's, to me, Joe and everyone, that seems like a reasonable accommodation to get to what he needs and, and still keeping the policy goals I'm trying to get alive.
All right. Bill, Bill Carnahan, did you have further comments as well?
I'll, I'll defer to Serge. He's, he's been waiting as long as.
Director, I, yeah, I was, I was just looking across the windows in my thing.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. I'll, I'll defer to him.
No, I'm, I meant to have my hand down. Sorry.
All right, sorry. Oh, Bill, you're next to my, my, my boxes here.
What I was curious about in terms of the data collection is that we are talking about non-residential customers here, which you would think would tend to be larger than households in terms of their usage. And these are customers who are 120 days or more past due and they are only going to have a $20 limit. I mean, I, I can't imagine anyone having a, a bill that small. So I would be curious as to what is the percentage of, of those who fall in that category? It can't be very large. You know, it's, it's, I'm surprised it's above zero. So I'm not sure what the, what the, you know, how those play against one another. And when you get to residential in the same situation, you know, who, who's going to be 120 days overdoing their electric bill and only have a $20 bill? It's, it seems like a terribly low number to me, just on the, in terms of their ability to, to keep it that low. Do we have data on that?
Bill, yeah, that's an excellent question. I think I, I, I covered it in my earlier comments. The $20 limit, this is what makes sense from an operational perspective in being able to say, hey, okay, when I do send a $20 balance, right, or if, if there is one, at $20, that's when it starts making sense in being able to refer that balance to the collections agency such that it, you know, from a administrative perspective, the cost associated with that, that's when it, it actually starts making sense. But that's not to say that we are going to see a lot of customers that have a $20 balance that SDG needs longer collecting on, that they've actually returned back to us. So I think, and, and maybe I didn't do a good job of making that distinction. Generally speaking, the return balances will definitely be more than $20. Because again, this is the customer who was active, right? And they have been active for long period of time and they have consumed power. And for whatever reason, one way or the other, they have not been able to make a payment of that energy already consumed. You know, SDG has tried to collect on the balance and they have not been able to do that. And so the only other recourse is for them to send it back to the source, which is us and say, hey, you guys can do what you want to do with it going forward.
All right. Well, let's, let's do this because I think we've had a lot of conversation here. Let's go to the public comment before we progress with this discussion to some sort of conclusion. Megan, do we have anybody that would wish, anybody in the public that wishes to comment on this item?
Yes, we have one hand raised at this time. Lori Saldana. You should be able to unmute yourselves.
Yes.
And you have three minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you. And this is my first time joining this boards, public meetings. So it's interesting to learn more about your organization as you move towards launching this to residential customers. I concur with some of the discussion, especially on the demographics of the people that are going to be signing up for your programs, because what some of us may think is just an inconvenience if we're late on a payment. If you have a certain socioeconomic group and they're being late results in enforcement of collections and it hits their credit rating. For some people, that is inversely proportionate to the amount of income they have in terms of the impact. They, low income households already struggle to maintain credit rating, which is now used for a lot of different purposes. Yeah, what it was originally intended. And so I agree with the comments of Councilwoman Montgomery step that and others who said that it's really important to understand who your customers are as part of the process of determining the best way to do collections and see what kind of delinquency situation you have. So that was, that was the main thing as I listened to the discussion and just from my time working in the California Assembly, when we would look at how people were paying their bills, there are a lot of unbanked, low income households that again, may struggle, they may not be on an automatic payment system that other people who easily have access to banks may use routinely. I don't know if that's been discussed in prior meetings, but will people be able to sign up for automatic payments as part of being one of your customers? So it will be a, something that's automatically deducted from their credit union accounts or bank accounts. And, and are there, will there be any fees attached to those types of payments when they do prefer to do that versus sending you a paper check? So those are my comments and questions about some of the billing issues that were discussed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comment. There's no more hand raised and there's no written comments.
Lucas, did you want to respond to that public comment about auto pay and any, any associated fees with that as well?
Absolutely, Chair Moscow. So Lori, thank you very much for the question. That's a very good question, actually. In terms of the overall billing mechanics, we will send our charges to SDG on the backend. And SDG will present our charges on one bill, just the SDG bill that you've, you've, you've gotten accustomed to seeing with a line item and a section articulating our charges. And as far as the payment process goes, payment will go through SDG. And yes, SDG does actually allow for customers to get on auto payment plans. I personally have one and I don't necessarily look at my bill unless something seems to be amiss. So that option currently exists and you can take advantage of the automatic payment process for your bills on, 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 on SDG portal relative to your account.
Thank you, Lucas. Lucas, I'm wondering if we can basically separate these, the non-residential as, as Director Baber was mentioning and our, and Bill Carnahan was mentioning. Can we separate the non-residential customers and say this policy applies to non-residential customers? And then do a little bit more work. It sounds like we have a little bit more time because we're, we're launching the, 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 the residential customers. I think La Mesa may be up first in the, the new year. And so perhaps we can kind of do a little bit more work on the residential side of this. And that could be informed by the discussion here. It sounds like people want to, on the first bullet, move that up a bit and, and, and do a little bit work even on the last bullet. And, but there are a lot of comments here tonight. Director Montgomery step?
I, I am fine with that, Chair. I, I was going to, if, I wanted to ask Lucas, my thought, here was, here was my thought, that we could change the first bullet point to reflect $50 instead of 20 to coincide with a policy that is tried and true and that we could change the, the bullet point, the second bullet point to coincide with the first change. But if, if the board's pleasure is to go back to the table and see if we can come up with something different or bifurcate policies for different classes of customers, I'm totally fine with that, too. I just was basing my thought on Lucas's comments, you know, that, that sort of in the trenches now and kind of needed a framework to go, to go with now. So.
I'm, I'm good with that, too. Were we basically put in, put in place policy for, for, for all of our customers and make that change? And then as Lucas and his team is able to crunch the data, come back to, to, to adjust and make more perfect the policy consistent with what our, our goals are, which I think have been crystal clear tonight, not only by the public comment, but all the board members wanting to make sure that, that that people that are falling on hard times are not being harassed by collection agencies and attorneys by this public agency.
How about, can I try a motion, Mr. Chair? I, I would amend general, on, on your proposed policy, Lucas, bullet two. I would amend it to say SD CP will select a local collections agency to enforce this policy against non-residential customers. On three, I would make the change that Monica had suggested to 50. At four, I would make the corresponding change to make that 4999. On number seven, I just think practically suing somebody for 750 bucks is not efficient, but if, I would live with that if it was a thousand. And then if.
Collection agencies aggregate, so it's not like you're going to hire one attorney to see for one account. It's aggregating.
Okay, then I would admit that. And then if you want to add bullet point nine, that says, you know, staff will return with a proposal to look at a parallel policy for residential after collecting more data, something like that. So we're giving you direction to come back.
So, but then you're, you're, so now we have three different pathways because now you're saying that, that, that you're saying, let's make this just for, for the non-residential, but now you want to make it even, you want to basically move it from even what Lucas is saying for the non-residential customers as well.
Well, I was trying to accommodate what Monica had previously.
But she was saying one, one policy altogether for the residential and the non-res.
Is that what you were saying, Monica?
I was saying, I was saying that, but with the caveat of what your last bullet was, which we would come back and, you know, bifurcate the policies at the time when we have residential customers. So I'm not opposed to, to your changes, but then again, it goes back to what the chair said, which, you know, keeping at 20, is that, is that okay for the, the customer class that we have right now? Which is not residential.
I was just trying to accommodate yours. If you, let, let me simplify it. You can accomplish my goal by just changing two to say SD CP will select a local collection agent to enforce this policy against non-residential customers and then add item not bullet point nine. The staff will return with a, a adjusted policy for residential customers after they collect more data. That accomplishes my mission. I'm not.
Yeah. So you're saying, so you're, so you want to basically apply this only to non-residential customers at this time. So Lucas, what do you think about that? Which pathway is better? So I think that what, what Director Montgomery step is saying is that we could put this in place for everybody right now and then, and then come back at the soonest possible opportunity to adjust this based on the data and based on the input that you've received today. Or should we basically have a situation where we basically just say, this just applies to non-residential customers? And then you'll come back as soon as possible again to have a policy for the residential customers.
Thank you, Chair Moscow and the directors. I think the latter option seems to be easier to implement right now simply because we are in need of guidance today. And then we can definitely come back with regards to the residential class once we have better data in the upcoming year.
Okay. So, so, so Bill, do you want to make that motion then?
Yes. So Lucas, it would be adding the caveat to two to say this is only for non-residential and a caveat and a new line item for nine saying that I, however you want to phrase it, the staff will return within reasonable time after conducting more research on a parallel policy for not for residential customers. Very open to give you that assignment. That okay? Lucas, is that clear enough direction?
That sounds good, Director.
That's my motion.
So we have, we have a motion and a second.
Chair, can I get clarification on the motion? I apologize. Are we not changing the amount then on the non-residential? It's going to be how it is in the PowerPoint. Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
I tried to do it in as few as words as possible, Megan.
Listen, I don't think anybody has an objection to the amounts for non-residential. Although they may not be as relevant, I would imagine. But, but they're not, they're not objectionable for the non-residential. It's more of an issue for the residential, the people, as Bill says, yeah. So we have a motion and a second.
Okay, Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
I'm sorry, I would like to, I'm going to interrupt just really fast. Sorry, Chair. There is another public, another hand raised at this time. I didn't know if public comments been closed or.
No, no, let's recognize that person.
Okay. Alex C, you should be able to unmute yourself. You'll have three minutes. Alex, are you there? It looks like they actually lowered their hand, so.
All right. So we have a motion on the table with the second and let's vote.
Okay, Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Dina, how do you vote?
Did you know I?
Board Member Montgomery step, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right. And now we're on to item number seven, approval of phase three net energy metering enrollment schedule. And Lucas, this is you too.
Thank you, Chair Moscow. Yes, it's yet me again. So for, for, for this item in particular, just want to provide a quick high level background on it. The board has actually already approved this as part of the, the NEM policy approval that you provided in May. But we just wanted to come back to, to you all tonight to actually rub a stamp that for the, for the board and the general public understanding such that, you know, we can essentially enforce what the board approved in May. Moving over to the next slide, please. So as a background for this item, in April, that your board did approve the phase and schedule. As you can see here, we're going to start with Imperial Beach in February of 2020 and conclude with Chula Vista in San Diego as of May 2022. And then subsequently in May of, of this year, your board also approved a net energy metering program and policy wherein there is a specific clause under section D wherein that clause essentially mandates for, for us to enroll net energy metering customers to coincide with the, with the end of their relevant period, which then would mean we would have a monthly net energy metering enrollment starting in February, all the way through January of 2023. So, and, and, and the, the reasons why the board approved this specific mechanism is such that it minimizes any potential premature true ups, which obviously would be financially impactful to the customers. Moving over to the next slide, please. One more. So the reason why it's, it's important for us to administer net energy metering enrollments to coincide with the relevant period. One is it's a, it's a, it's the most customer centric enrollment approach. Wherein the transition from bundle service and into our service would be seamless. In other words, this process would allow for customers to complete their 12 months relevant period wherein they can offset the credits accrued, particularly in the summer months when the sun is outshining relative to the charges accrued in the winter, when there really isn't a whole lot of sunshine. And, and so allowing for that process to play out throughout the entirety of the relevant period allows for the customers to essentially net these two moving pieces and get the overall net benefit before they switch over to our service. Whereas if we don't do it this way, let's say, you know, we pick up. Whereas if we don't do it this way, let's say, you know, we pick up an account before the twelve months and let's say it's actually in the winter. When they're having charges and not nearly enough credits because the sun is no longer shining as much. Then that would essentially impact the customer in 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 the sense that the customer will be will see a charge. Or or rather an unexpected charge on their bill, and that's not what the the board wanted for us to adopt. Uh, via the the NEM policy that 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 you all um uh adopted in May. And then the other benefit of 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 doing in. Monthly NEM enrollment to coincide with the relevant period is it actually allows for better logistics from our perspective. Again, we we do have to uh meet the statutory requirements wherein every customer that rolls over to our service. Has to re as part of mass enrollment, they have to receive two sets of mailers, pre-enrollment notices. Um, and post enrollment notices sixty days before the enrollment starts and sixty days after their enrollment has concluded. And then last but not least, the benefit of doing NEM enrollments. To cor- correlate or coincide with the customer's relevant period is it allows for that seamless transition. And quite honestly, a great customer experience. Um, other CCAs who have not done. Net energy metering enrollments to coincide with relevant periods have received a lot of customer complaints. And quite honestly, have seen a lot of customer opt outs relative to the net energy metering uh subset. So for us and based on the guidance that the board provided in May, we just wanted to come back and 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 articulate the fact that. The net energy metering enrollment in particular, even though the board had already assumed and approved the. Uh, member city specific enrollment, that they will be slight nuances, and I'll get to that in a second uh via the next slide. So that you can see what that enrollment trajectory is going to look like. So this slide here summarizes the entirety of our phase three enrollment plan. Based on the member cities that the board approved in in April and most importantly, the net energy metering specific enrollment mechanics. Wherein what you what you see in this chart is uh based on what the board approved in April. We will start enrollment with Imperial Beach in February. So you see the nine thousand seven hundred eighty one accounts. Uh, with February twenty twenty two uh in the column, but we also do have net energy metering accounts. That have the relevant period ending in February, uh and that is the column, sorry, the row. That has Feb NEM for six thousand, six thousand three hundred and fifty six account. So in other words, what was what the board has already approved is the fact that we will enroll customers in Imperial Beach in February. And we're also going to enroll all of them customers regardless of member city who have. Their end of relevant period. In the month of February, and this will be true for all the other subsequent months until we conclude all enrollments in January of twenty twenty three.
So that was going to be my question. So I was gonna say like, for instance, with Encinitas. Are all my NEM customers not going to be enrolled until twenty twenty three, but you're saying that regardless of when we're launching, which is April. Of twenty twenty two for Encinitas that that um. That we would launch the NEM customers as as of the beginning year, and if their their anniversary date is. Um, well, the but that so I'm sorry, I still don't understand that. So if they're. So say I'm an M customer in Encinitas and and my anniversary date is February. Then 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 I wouldn't basically come onto the books of SDCP until January of twenty twenty three.
Actually, that is quite the contrary, Chair Moscow. So if you are an energy metering customer in Encinitas. And Encinitas is slated to have the mass enrollment in April, but if you have your anniversary date in February, you are going to be part of the six thousand three hundred and fifty six. Accounts that you see in row, I think it's the sixth row uh on the first column. Because. The way that the board approved our net energy metering policy calls for us to enroll customers. To coincide with their with their anniversary month, and that anniversary month is February. And so in other words. This customer in Encinitas who who whose neighbor, let's say, who is not on net energy metering. Will will have to wait until April to be enrolled, but if you're an energy metering customer with the February anniversary month. You will get to go when uh Imperial Beach enrollment happens in February.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I've actually been giving bad information to my NEM customers. So thank you.
My pleasure.
And that was the brilliance in our decision making, right?
Yeah, I think with with net energy metering customers, there's just that technical nuance there. That we wanted to bring forth to the board so that you were um, you could see uh clearly what that process is going to look like.
So we have a lot of NEM customers, by the way.
We actually do. Um, in the state of California, we will be the CCA with the largest net energy metering uh subset of customers. Think the uh the other CCA uh comparative to our to us in terms of size, they have, if I remember correctly, around eighty. Ninety thousand, whereas for us, it's almost ninety three thousand.
Yeah, wow. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your um your presentation. Do you have more to your presentation?
Actually, that concludes uh my presentation for tonight, Chair Moscow.
All right, that was a good presentation. Um, and thank you for that information. I think this was really a good um presentation, just to kind of level set where we're at. Um, especially since I'm spreading misinformation to my NEM customers. Um, anybody have any board member have any questions or comments? All right, let's open this up to the public. Do we have any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised and there's no written comments at this time.
All right, let's bring it back to the board. And if there are no other questions or comments, I um I'm sorry, Lucas, did you need a motion on this year? Just this is just a receiving file?
I think for the benefit of the public because of the that inherent nuance. Perhaps Chair, and again, I'll I'll defer to you, maybe moving a a vote on this might might help provide that clarity for for everyone.
Ryan did uh, Ryan, did you want to chime in here? I it sounds like we already basically established this. Um, do you need another motion there?
If you've established this already, you do not need another motion. The recommended action, though, is to approve this uh schedule. So if it differs in any way from what you prior previously approved, saying the implementation plan or elsewhere, then I would suggest a motion, but if not, then one's not needed.
Is this the same, Lucas?
So it 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 actually isn't, it isn't. And the reason why I say that is the board officially approved. The schedule that you see made on member city. But implied the NEM mechanics uh that were denoting on 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 this chart tonight.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve this schedule as as put forth here.
With approval.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Padilla. Do you have a second?
Chair, we do have a hand raised at this time.
All right, do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second it, Mr. Baber.
All right, we have a uh second from Director Baber, and I'll recognize the member of the public.
Karina, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you so much. Good evening again. Uh, my name is Karina Gonzalez. I live in Chula Vista. Um, just wanted to urge staff to. Maybe simplify this a little bit more for members of the public. This enrollment schedule is pretty confusing. Um. And this is coming from someone who's been following the NEM proceedings at the CPUC, so um just making it clear so that residents are aware when. They're going to be enrolled would be helpful. Um, those are my comments. Thank you.
That's a really good comment because I think that that it's sometimes for for us that are kind of geeking out on it and are looking at this all the time. Um, you know, it that doesn't mean that it's going to make sense to our our customers. And so um, I'm I'm assuming that that um and uh. Bill's got his hand raised, but that we're we're going to be working with all of our communications folks uh to ensure that this information is understandable. Um, to all of our customers, specifically the NEM customers. Is that correct, Lucas and Bill? We working with our communication firm?
Abs. Absolutely, Chair Moscow. Uh, we actually do have a dedicated net energy metering page on our website that essentially breaks down the information. Uh, with regards to when customers can expect. To be enrolled. Um, and just to quickly summarize this chart over here um and possibly um help with the uh the. Uh, the mechanics around net energy metering enrollment. Uh, so. Sorry, um, in other words, for any customer who has the anniversary or a true up. Or relevant period ending in the month of February, all the cus- all net energy metering customers that fall in that. Uh, anniversary month of February will be enrolled in February of twenty twenty two. And that will be true for every customer that has a relevant period ending in subsequent months, so March, April. All the way through January of twenty twenty three. That is that that is how um the board approved the NEM rollout. Um, as part of the uh the NEM policy uh uh approval in May, and this is what we're essentially capturing here at a very high level.
Bill Carnahan?
Well, I'm just gonna summarize the sort of what uh Lucas just said, that. The most the bulk of our customers, certainly all of our residential customers are going to be driven by where they live. That will dictate when they come under our service territory, except all the NEM customers were honoring their existing contracts. So their true up month and their existing contract will be the be the driver, so they don't have to screw up that arrangement. We're honoring. In effect, I look at it, we're we're honoring that contract, so we don't make it difficult for them. So if if we change it, there'll be winners and losers. And the losers are the ones that Lucas talked about that others had problems with and were upset, and this way it's same old, same old. We're not going to change that. So it's uh contract driven.
Right, and it it's better that way because otherwise we would have, we would be launching our NEM customers in subsequent years. And so. Here, I mean, I I do think that um to the to the to the point of the public speaker, I I do think there's a communication. Issue potentially too, like we're, you know, in Encinitas uh we're launching in April. Some of my NEM customers could be getting information uh at the beginning of the year. Um. And so uh we want to be able to reach out to them and and ensure that they understand. Um, when their choice is coming and 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 all of the information that we're presenting to them. So, all right, so we have a motion. If there's no more questions, we have a motion and a second on the table, um then we will vote.
Right, board member Baber, how do you vote?
I.
Board member Dina, how do you vote?
Did you know I?
Board member Montgomery step, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
Great, we're now on to our information reports and updates. Item number eight on our agenda is operations and administration report. From interim chief executive officer, Bill Carnahan. You will note that uh and Bill may mention this, that we we've actually changed the agenda a bit. We're we're constantly kind of uh adjusting and improving uh to make sure we're as efficient as possible, and we're moving through things uh as quickly. As possible as well.
Well, I would just follow up on that saying that uh, you know, when you tweak it, it doesn't always work out a hundred percent like you like it. So it's. I consider it still to be under construction, so if you uh have any suggestions or if it's parts of it are confusing or you can. Make it easier, let us know because we're it's your agenda and we want to be uh as as it's it is easy and efficient as as we can for you all. Uh, given that, though, and given the lateness of the hour, I have uh nothing else to report.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Item, uh, let's move to item number I nine, receiving file treasurer's report for this uh fiscal year twenty twenty two. Um, year to date period ending August thirty first, twenty twenty one, Eric Washington. Eric?
Uh, good evening, Chair and Directors. I'll just do a brief treasurer's report just to speak to uh results for the period that ended eight thirty one. Uh, overall, uh compared to the budget, we landed positively with our net operating revenue. Finishing seventeen percent ahead of budget. That was offset slightly by our operating expenses coming in approximately three percent over. Uh, our budget driven primarily by uh energy costs. Uh, the results as presented uh in the slide. I'll just explain the the graph, uh the bar chart, the blue. Column represents the actual results, the orange column represents uh the budget. So that's a depiction of where we landed. Uh, with regard to uh the results for the period. So we reported net revenue of seventy eight point eight million, uh offset by sixty one point five million. In total, operating costs, sixty uh point four million were were allocated to uh energy costs. Which landed us in a a reserve or a positive net change in uh op in in uh net position of seventeen point three million. Uh, next slide. Uh, continuing on that trend, our uh results also compared favorably to our projections. Uh, with our net operating revenue coming in two point five million dollars over what was projected. Uh, energy costs, again, offsetting that to the tune of one point two million over with that cost uh being allocated. To uh energy costs. Overall, change in that position was a positive compared to the projection to the tune of one point uh three million. Uh, the bar chart, uh as with the comparative analysis to the budget, blue representing the actual results compared to. The orange columns which reflect the projections. Uh, so again, overall, uh we landed positively from both perspectives as it relates to the budget. As well as uh the projections. So that'll conclude my treasurer's report, and I'll hand it back over to you, Chair Moscow.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions for Eric? Any questions from the public? I don't see any hands up. Megan, do you have any comments?
There's no written comments at this time.
All right, let's move to item number ten. And that's an update on phase two marketing and public relations, and that's Rita.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Rita.
Hi.
Is this your your second board meeting?
Yes, it's my first one presenting to you. So nice to be here. Um, I'm Rita De La Fuente, your new director of external affairs. My job is to help build trusted relationships with and in the communities that we serve. Marketing community, marketing and public relations are just a few of the tools that we have to do that. Tonight, I'm going to give you a recap of the marketing and public relations campaign that took place for phase two, our commercial and industrial enrollment phase. I want to start by acknowledging our team on staff and our community advisory committee. For being so intentional in messaging to the public and guiding our brand through a successful campaign. We're all ambassadors and com- um including you, the board, and we're doing a lot of cool things, and we want to share that with you so that you can mirror our tone and messaging in the community. San Diego Community Power enlisted civilian agency. To help manage an array of marketing and public relations activities to build trust in the community and create po- positive feelings. And emotions tied to our brand. Their expertise helped us achieve a consistent look and feel and an overall very exciting brand. Although everyone's hard work began long before I came on board, everyone's efforts are apparent as our reach continues to grow. And we have a great place to spring off for our next phase. So as we begin planning and developing our marketing and PR strategy for phase three residential enrollment. It's important to look at back at lessons learned from our previous enrollment campaign. So our goals for faith, the phase, oh, I'm sorry, next slide. Our goals for the phase two campaign were to build awareness and trust, minimize opt outs and drive people to our website to learn more. The campaign also supported the key account outreach that was concurrently being conducted by our account services team. So to achieve these goals, we edu- we focused on educating our audience on who San Diego Community Power is. Why we matter and the rationale for being a customer partner. And by showcasing the broader benefits of San Diego Community Power and community choice aggregation at in general. For the community, region and environment. Next slide. So as you know, San Diego Community Power elected to enroll its customers in three distinct phases, municipal. Commercial and industrial and residential. These face two creative concepts that you see here. I'm sorry, I think I I'm at the previous slide. Thank you. These face two creative concepts that you see here were specifically tailored to appeal to business customers. Therefore, the messaging customers were designed to build trust by showing our service as a win-win-win proposition. And building our region's sense of local pride. Next slide. Our strategy included specific and targeted messaging for commercial and industrial customers as well as a variety of tactics, including sponsored content on the UT. Print and radio ads on voice and viewpoint, KPBS. San Diego Business Journal, Latino and Univision, and sponsored posts on Facebook, Instagram and LinkedIn. We were able to test targeting, targeted messaging in the region and we'll have those results of that testing soon and continue to build on the foundation for our brand. The chart here shows the complexity down to the dollar of our phasing of each of these tactics, including media channels, language, geography, culture, timing, cost and estimated impressions for the investment made. We strategically purchased paid media to coincide with the launch of Phase Two in June and wrap it up at the end of July after the majority of customers had received their first bill with our service. Next slide. So here we have the win-win-win concept in the voice of San Diego, or I'm sorry, San Diego Voice and Viewpoint that refers to making an impact in your community, getting cleaner power and at competitive rates. Next slide. Here's the local pride concept that ran in the San Diego Business Journal that refers to reinvesting back into your community. Next slide. We strove to reach diverse audiences in this campaign. Going beyond literal translation, we also made sure to include culturally sensitive messaging. In addition to print, 15-second Spanish-language audio ads ran in June and July on Univision's FM radio station. Next slide. Here are samples of our Facebook and Instagram ads. These channels drove the highest volume of traffic, generating 55% of the landing page visits for this campaign. Next slide. We've run two very successful co-marketing campaigns with our Power 100 Champions. The San Diego International Airport and Illumina campaigns collectively generated an estimated three and a half million coverage views and they're still coming. We have, they have been both extremely eager and willing to cross-promote with us. So we're extremely grateful for our new partnership with their teams. And while these two institutions represent some of the largest, largest energy users in our region, our team has also been exploring opportunities to support smaller businesses and we continue to engage with Power 100 customers regardless of their, of their size. Next slide. In the spirit of highlighting our community partnerships, we wanted to touch on our co-promotional campaign that we ran with the San Diego Padres. We were featured as the 2021 Tonight's Light sponsor for the Padres' home night games, which was an asset created just for San Diego Community Power and which helped us, helped set us apart from their other in-park advertising. This campaign tapped into our community pride marketing concept and we continue to explore other opportunities like this to reach captive audiences from diverse communities. For example, our team's been exploring a potential partnership with the San Diego Loyal Soccer Club. We feel a strong alignment with these fans and appreciate especially their reach into South County. Last weekend, we had a trial activation and we were very pleased at how many people did recognize who we are, even acknowledging that we're the new clean energy alternative and we're excited to see us and speak with us. Next slide. In addition to the focused marketing and media efforts, we worked with Civilian on a communications and outreach strategy to educate our audience again by demonstrating the broader benefits of San Diego Community Power and community choice aggregation in general. Our outreach included showcasing power purchase agreements as a strong proof point for community investment and long-term environmental impact, highlighting key business customers to build momentum and creating educational comment to reach more customers. We distributed press releases and articles that achieved nearly 10 million coverage views. Staff was interviewed on local podcasts and made several presentations to businesses and community groups and they continue to do so. Next slide. Finally, I just wanted to briefly touch on our direct mail efforts. With Civilian's talented creative team, we went above and beyond the required pre and post-enrollment notices. Announcements were designed with a marketing approach to elevate our brand and to deliver our messaging as clean and clear as possible. Next slide. So what did we learn? This multi-channel media campaign succeeded in driving awareness and generating landing page visits. Our most successful tactics for this campaign were paid search, social media and radio in print. We believe a robust paid media campaign is necessary to increase engagement and to build our brand. Additional organic social media will also be needed to boost the performance of the paid media. We learned that our partnerships with key accounts like the airport and Illumina created the highest level of buzz, of buzz, excuse me. The Phase Two effort will continue with more partnerships as we continue to promote our Power 100 Champions. Next slide. This is just a quick snapshot of the creative concepts that we're looking, that we're working on for Phase Three. We'll be coming back to you with a full campaign next month. The My Reasons concept that you see on the left will be tailored to each city infusing a feeling of local pride. It also provides us an opportunity to feature actual customer feedback through testimonials. We'll begin developing case studies with community leaders to create that trust. On the right, you'll see the "Oh, yeah, and" concept, which has a feeling of dropping in the middle of neighbors having a conversation. We're testing messaging on these two concepts and look forward to sharing them with you when we get closer to launch. So to conclude, our lessons learned will help us guide our approach as we plan our Phase Three campaign. It is important to build a multi-pronged approach to reach residents in Phase Three. While we're working on building our community ambassadors, it's still very crucial to have a well-trusted brand. So going forward, we feel strongly that further outreach is necessary to build trust in our community. While we definitely want to minimize opt-outs, we want to be the ones controlling our information and telling our own story. With that, that concludes my report and we're here for questions. Thanks.
Well, excellent, Rita. This is really good presentation. Thank you. And your, your first presentation, you did such a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's, it's something that, you know, in terms of just our focus on the next phase, it's so important. It's, you know, it's the, the bulk of our customers and we really need to communicate with them and this is, this is definitely moving in the right direction. The partnerships are so important. I, I agree with you, with you in terms of the buzz, the partnership with Illumina and the airport and Padres and soccer. I mean, it's just, it creates such buzz and so, and then taking it to the next level, even partnering with smaller company, companies that don't have as much power consumption but are important in the individual member agency's territory. That's, you know, like there are several different, you know, businesses that have have very important kind of presence in Encinitas and, and, and I'm sure it's the same in Chula Vista or, or ID or, or San Diego or La Mesa, where, where you really partner with them and you get that, 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 that buzz in that community as well. And so hopefully we'll continue doing that. I see Director Baber's hands up and so I'll call on Director Baber.
Quickly, Rita, thank you. I just have a suggestion put in the back of your mind when you're dealing with the Padres. I have a dream that someday I'll be listening to a Padre game or watched on TV and a Padre will hit a home run and the announcer will go, "That blast of power brought to you by San Diego Community Power." So if they have a home run sponsor, you should, you should sign up for it.
I love it. Thank you, Director Baber.
Is that it, Director?
If I have a home run sponsor, I can die in peace.
Director Montgomery Step?
Thank you. I, I think this is awesome. Thank you so much, Rita, for the presentation. I'm especially happy to see the Voice and Viewpoint included along with the Latinos publication. Those are publications that I see a lot in the areas that I am in and the areas that I represent in city council, but also the mid-city area and national cities. So I'm really grateful to see those. The, the co-marketing partnerships seem to be super successful. So are there any, any others that we have in mind that maybe we're working on right now or?
We do have a couple of smaller businesses that have opted up to Power 100 that we are testing around some creative ideas with. So we don't have anything set in stone yet, but I, I do think that there's some anticipation to hear from the smaller businesses and I think that they'll be great at the testimonials, that concept of My Reasons and doing something for my business and my community, I think will be really powerful.
Yeah, okay. Just the last thing is also drawing some things out there like the Family Health Centers of San Diego and other nonprofits like the Urban League and the San Ysidro Health Centers Union of Pan-Asian Communities. I know that this is already a lot, so thank you. And I know we'll just continue to get the word out. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you for your suggestions.
All right, and I think we have one member of the public that wants to speak to this item. So let's recognize that member of the public.
Lori, you should be able to unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for an interesting presentation. I, I think that there are a lot of good reasons for customers to sign up. And I agree that you're trying to earn their trust because people want their lights to be reliable, their energy to be reliable. And so I understand why you emphasize trust and win-win-win, and this is a partnership. I have to express some concern, however, over your power procurement process because you, you signed an agreement with BEWA earlier this year to produce energy that is not local, to be quite honest. And I speak as a native San Diegan, someone who grew up in this community and I see a lot of pictures in your presentation of a lot of coastal areas and urban scenes, including the San Diego Airport. Hacumbia, where this BEWA project is going to be, they're not really local in, in the sense that I think customers are going to consider. They're not a city, they're not part of this community plan. And in fact, a solar project the size of San Diego Airport dumped in their community is really a violation, in my opinion, of trust. And I speak as someone who has served as a legislator for half a million people in San Diego and I heard often when people feel like their trust has been violated by actions of the government or agencies of the government. And so it concerns me. I don't know where your responsibility ends. And once you agree to contract for power created by, even if it's clean solar, but the footprint is massive and the traffic of workers going to and from that job site because they don't live in that community adds to air quality impacts. And the people that live near that job and live near those solar panels are not hired, do not benefit, don't even get power from that project. It's, it violates some sense of trust in what you're putting out there. And that was evident this summer when the project was heard at the County Board of Supervisors and dozens.
Lori, I don't mean to interrupt you and I know you have a little bit more time left, but could you keep your comments to the, the item that's before us, which is the?
Absolutely. You're, you are putting forward a marketing and public relations program built on trust, built on win-win-win, built on local pride. And when your organization engages in a contract for power in a community that feels betrayed by the scale, you know, I, I'm just as bluntly and directly as I can saying that I, this, what you're trying to do with marketing and public relations doesn't match up with the actions that you took this year contracting with BEWA RE for that massive solar project in people's community. So they are working on a lawsuit. I think you're going to wind up being part of that lawsuit, if not directly, indirectly.
Lori, your, your three minutes is up if you can just wrap up what your, your comment.
And I, I just want to say, I think the actions of your board this year has made your public relations and marketing plan a little more difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan, are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
Whether or not.
All right, so let's bring it back to the board and thank you, Rita, for this presentation. And we look forward to your next presentation on, on the communications that you're going to be putting forward. Next on our list is item number 11, that's update on regulatory and legislative affairs. And Laura?
Thank you, Chair. If we can go ahead and move to the next slide, please. So back in 2018, CPUC decision created two new community solar programs that targeted disadvantaged communities. These programs offer 100% solar energy to customers and provide a 20% discount on the electricity and delivery portion of customers' bills. Back in 2019, program capacity was reserved for CCAs that were in existence in that time. But since SDCP did not yet exist, we were not given an allocation of program capacity. SDGNE was allowed 18 megawatts of capacity under the DACGT program and five megawatts of capacity under the CSGT program. But SDGNE has not signed any contracts with developers for these programs and customers have not yet been enrolled by SDGNE in these programs. So we decided we would like to take advantage of these programs. And last month, we filed an advice letter in order to request our allocation for these programs. We requested 14.39 megawatts for the DACGT program and four megawatts for the CSGT program. Since we weren't originally allocated program capacity, we had to work really closely with staff at CPUC to develop a process for us to receive approval to administer these programs. It's also worth noting that SDGNE did file a response to support our request. But of course, filing an advice letter is just the first step and we have a long way to go. But in light of our close coordination so far with the CPUC as well as our support from SDGNE, I'm hopeful that we'll get this allocation approved in a timely manner. I'd like to thank Sebastian Sariah, who's been the staff lead on this project, as well as our Regulatory Council Tostel for their assistance in driving this forward. And this is just the first step, but I thought it was exciting, so I want to provide an update. Any questions on this item?
No, but this is awesome. Thank you to you and Ty and Sebastian.
Cool. If we can go to the next slide, please. So this one is the Percentage of Income Payment Plan Pilot Program. Who wants to try saying that one 10 times fast? That's why they called the PIP. To provide a bit of background on this one, back in 2018, the CPUC opened a rulemaking to adopt rules and policies to reduce disconnections. And on October 11th of this year, the CPUC issued a decision that orders the three large IOUs to implement these PIP pilot programs. And what these pilot programs will do is they will set a participant's utility bill payment amounts at an affordable percentage of the participant's monthly income. The monthly bill cap will be based on 4% of the household's monthly income. And the idea behind these programs is to test whether this approach can reduce the number of low-income households that might be at risk of disconnection. CCAs do have the option to elect to participate in these pilot programs if they choose and cost for the programs will be allocated through the pub, they'll be recoverable through the public purpose program charge. And I wanted to bring, to highlight this one because this was actually a really nice regulatory victory for SDCP in particular. The way that the decision was originally drafted, the proposed decision, they call it, our customers would not have been eligible to participate because we are not currently serving residential customers. But we worked with our trade association, CALCCA, to file comments on the proposed decision in order to get some changes to ensure that SDCP customers will be able to participate. And we also worked closely with SDGNE on this one to ensure the timing of the pilot will not be complicated by the residential rollout schedule. Since we will be rolling out to residential customers through May of next year. And so the way that the decision is now, the final decision, our customers will be able to participate. SDCP will be able to participate and we do plan to participate so that our customers will have the ability to participate in this pilot program. And I'd like to thank Lucas, who was really helpful in getting these changes into the final decision. It's a regulatory item, but Lucas has that operational expertise to make sure that, you know, it would all work on his side of everything. So thank you, Lucas, for your help and also thank you to SDGNE for working with us and letting, sharing their comments with us to make sure that we were all on board and that the timing of the pilot wouldn't be complicated by our rollout to residential customers. Any questions on this one? Okay, next slide, please. Finally, the response to the OM Connect petition for modification. So OM Connect is a demand-response provider that you might be familiar with. Back in September, they filed a petition for modification to request that the CPUC raise the maximum cumulative capacity bucket cap from 8.3% to 11.3%. Put another way, a previous CPUC decision limited the amount of demand response that a load-serving entity like a CCA can use to meet resource adequacy obligations. And OM Connect now wants to increase that limit. They argue that the cap has hampered growth in the demand-response market and they also argue that it impedes the realization of the state's full demand-response potential. In supporting their In supporting their petition, they have to, uh, talk about why they didn't bring it forth sooner. Why didn't they bring it up within a year of the initial decision? They said facts have changed. They relied on Governor Newsom's recent emergency proclamation, which highlighted the need to expand and expedite approval of demand response programs. And if you're wondering why there's a dirty-looking power plant on this slide, it's because this is sort of what comes to mind for me when I think about resource adequacy generally. Um, so SDCP, along with two other CCAs, Redwood Coast Energy Authority and San Jose Clean Energy, did, uh, file a response supporting OM Connect's request because we believe that increasing the cap would enable more flexibility and meeting resource adequacy requirements with things like demand response rather than dirty power plants. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions for Laura? All right. Do we have any members of the public that would like to, uh, ask questions or make comments?
There's no written comments and there's no hands raised at this time.
All right. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item number 12, Power Resources Monthly Update, and that is Byron.
Right. Good evening.
You're always last, Byron.
I, I know. It's, uh, I'm, I'm gonna say it's best for last, I hope, but, uh.
It's Byron and then dinner.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, if, if, if that's the case, then I'll, uh, I don't know, I'll be as quick as I can, because I don't.
I know, joking. You're, you're, this is very important.
I don't, I don't want anybody angry here on this, on this presentation. So we'll, uh, uh, we'll, we'll get into it here. Um, again, yeah, appreciate the, the late hour, but we do want to give an update here on, uh, resource adequacy and kind of some of our activity in the, in the RA market. Um, so it's been a, well, it's been, been a long month, uh, of October. We are coming up to the RA, again, Resource Acrecy Year Ahead filing deadline. Uh, that's November 1st. It's usually October 31st, but we get an extra day because Halloween falls on a, uh, on a weekend this year. Uh, you know, so, but, yeah, uh, it's been a, a long few weeks, I think, for the Power Services team. Uh, I think some families celebrate Halloween on 10/31, but I think for those of us in the power industry, uh, 10/31 is always getting all your deals done, probably a little short on sleep. And, uh, no matter how, how early you start, there are always some that just kind of come right down to the wire. Um, so we're, we're in that right now, um, and, and charity, to your point, I think it's, uh, you know, this presentation, then dinner, and then back to work to, to keep wrapping up a few deals to, to file tomorrow and Monday. Um, so just to give you a little bit of background on the RA process, obviously it's the Regulatory Capacity Program, right? That ma- make sure that we have enough capacity, enough power plants and enough supply, uh, and enough demand response. Thanks, Laura. Um, in, in the state to make sure we have, you know, could have enough power to serve everybody, keep the lights on, so to speak. Um, there are three types of RA, of, again, Resource Acrecy is RA, so you'll hear about it a pretty much a lot. Um, System RA, Local RA, Flexible RA. Um, the, in the Year Ahead process, there are one-year forward requirements for System and for Flexible. Local RA has a three-year requirement. Uh, it's relatively new as well, but it's a three-year requirement. So this year, you know, the next couple of days, we'll be filing to show that we have sufficient resources for 2022, 2023, and 24. Um, in addition to that, there's a, there aren't, there's a waiver process if you're unable, if you've done everything you can, demonstrated good faith efforts and, and done everything you can to, to secure those resources, but have been unable to find that RA, that is a waiver process for Local RA. There is not one for System RA and for Flex RA. There are different penalties for that. Um, but that's just some, some background. Um, as I, as I mentioned, there are still a lot of moving pieces, so we're still actively procuring, negotiating right down to the deadline on, on Monday, but we're getting a pretty good idea of where we stand. So just want to give you all an, an update there. Um, we feel confident in meeting our needs for 2024. So the third year of our, of our RA obligations, um, the requirements are, are lower, kind of a third year out. But also we have time to contract for resources, uh, like some of the long-term resources we've already signed that will be online, uh, in 2023, 2024, so they'll account for RA. Um, and there's just more available capacity in the market that hasn't been contracted already with other, other utilities or other LLCs. So 2022 and 2023, obviously closer, closer term here. Um, it's tough to have new resources built within a year, uh, within, within a year and a half. And so, uh, those, you know, next prompt year, kind of the next year, then the year after that, uh, those usually are, you know, existing resources or resource, resource that are already online or near completion. Um, additionally complicating that is that most of those resources, especially in, in Local RA, there's only been one big buyer of Local RA in the San Diego area over the last few years. Uh, and that's, you know, SDGNE, obviously, our, our incumbent utility. Uh, and most of those resources have been contracted with SDGNE for a number of years. Um, so they're just kind of less available in, in 22 and 23. So, uh, basically our, our compliance with, uh, for 2022 and 2023, not to oversimplify, but in a lot of ways, kind of relies on cooperation, kind of hinges on, um, for, for Local RA obligations, hinges on, you know, co- cooperation, contracting with, with SDGNE. Um, so without getting too, too into the nitty-gritty here, um, SDGNE has been working with us, not necessarily enthusiastically, but, but they've been working, uh, to try to sell us some of the resources. Um, yeah, within kind of their understanding of the process and then restrictions they have. They've been working to sell us some of, of the resources for the next couple of years. Um, I, I will note too, it doesn't help that, uh, the California RA, just the California market, that we all know, is quite tight and constrained in capacity. Um, there are also overlapping and complex market rules that are changing frequently. So there's just a lot of inefficiency in the market in and of itself. It's a kind of bilateral opaque market. There's no central, um, market, market for it, especially in, in our area in San Diego. Um, and, and so it, we're starting with a pretty, uh, pretty constrained, again, inefficient marketplace in the first place. Um, and then in addition to that, uh, what we're dealing, you, you know, with, with a IOU that is PUC jurisdictional. So they have to report to the PUC. They've got a whole lot of process and they're a very risk averse, uh, conservative, uh, organization in that sense as well. Um, so, and they're also new to selling resources, right? Some of the other IOUs in the state have had CCAs depart years ago, so they've had time to evolve kind of their processes, their mindset. It's kind of a whole, whole new look at the market and a whole new form of portfolio optimization. Um, and so we're, you know, working with SDGNE, but we're, we're finding that, you know, some of their processes, some of their contracting requirements aren't really what's typical in the market. Um, and so we've been working with them, um, you know, best, best we can. Um, but, you know, kind of, kind of bringing them up to speed in, in some ways and, and allowing them to come around to kind of how, how the market operates. No surprise, obviously, in, in some ways too, we have different, you know, views of, on, on things. Um, and I'll just note that in some ways, um, you know, we might have different definitions of, of terms like negotiation or kind of competitive solicitation, um, you know, just in, in how we, we see things, how the market sees things. And how, again, a big IOU that's been buying for a long time and is just kind of getting into the selling game. It's, it is a, a big kind of institutional shift. Um, so all that said, they've been working with us, you know, kind of within what they see as, as constraints um, to, to sell some volume in, you know, the next couple of years. Um, we think there's probably still some additional length there that either they're unwilling to sell or unable to sell. Um, but we're still negotiating down, down to the wire. Um, but long and short is that unless there's just kind of a, a major shift in negotiations here, we expect to file a waiver for at least so- some of our Local RA, uh, for, for 2022 and 2023. So that's where things currently stand. Again, things are moving quickly, um, you know. But unless there's a, a tectonic shift here, uh, in some of the current negotiations, we're expecting to file that local waiver for, for a port. Again, we've met a, a large share of our, um, of our RA needs, but again, it's a tight market and inefficient with, you know, a supplier who has everything we have. And in some ways, um, you, you know, interest in, in not, not cooperate or not, not selling as much as we'd like. So that, that, that's the update. I want to make sure you're all aware of that. Um, again, tough to get into some of the specifics around negotiation and process and all that, but I'm happy to answer questions or, or clarify anything, if you all would like.
Thank you, Byron, uh, for your presentation, um, and for this information. And, um, it is very complex. Um, let me open up to questions for my, for my board members. Uh, and I would also say that, um, you know, uh, Bill Carnahan, myself, and Steve Padilla, um, we, we, we meet with the CEO of, of, uh, SDGNE um, um, on a, on a somewhat regular basis, um, to discuss issues. And, and I think that if there are structural, um, recommendations or things that we should be bringing to that group, um, um, please do fill them, feed them up to Bill Carnahan so that we can basically put that on a list of things that we should be talking about. Um, because this, this, um, bilateral kind of negotiation, uh, is going to be something that we, um, have to undertake for a little bit. So.
Yeah, appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any, any questions on the, uh, part of my fellow board members? Bill Carnahan, did you want to say anything about that, uh, as well?
No, I, I would just tell you, we do have those discussions internally and we, we have sort of, we go up the ladder, you know, uh, as need be. And we discussed that possibility as recently as yesterday. And so we had one more shot at it. So, uh, we didn't trigger that, uh, that final rung at the top, but we got closer.
Right. I mean, everybody's schedule's busy, but I'll rely on you to, uh, to let us know, uh, when, uh, when we, you know, what needs to be on that list and, and when we need to meet. All right. Um, if there are no other questions, it looks like we have one member of the public that wishes to, uh, comment on this item. So we'll go, I'll recognize that person.
Lori, you've been, uh, you should be able to unmute yourself. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. It's, I know it's late and I, uh, thank you for presenting this. Since, again, I'm new to this, um, this model, I'm curious if these filings will be available for public review after they are turned in, um, on November 1st. And if any of these projects are delayed, I, it sounds like you're still relying on the power share with SDGNE. But if your upcoming projects are delayed, how does that impact your compliance? And then what are the consequences of being out of compliance, um, beyond the timelines that you're operating under?
Is that your full comment?
That, those are my questions.
All right.
Those are my full questions. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, thank you for your fellow comment. Um, Byron, um, uh, if you, uh, within what you can talk about, if you would like to address that person, uh, Lori's, uh, comment. And then, um, I don't know if, uh, Megan, if you have Lori's, uh, email, um, you know, uh, perhaps even, um, because those are some, um, uh, several questions, um, that could take some time to answer. I'm wondering too, if, if Byron, uh, or somebody on Byron's team could also, uh, um, respond via email to, uh, Lori's questions as well. But maybe you can, um, do both. Maybe you can kind of really, uh, within 60 seconds, respond, uh, to that question. And then maybe follow up with Lori via email, um, because it does, um, I think, uh, deserve a, a good response.
Sure. Yeah, we'd be happy to follow, of, of, of course. Um, quickly, again, I'll, I'll keep it quick. I realize every word here is a word where we're not eating dinner. Um, but, but, yeah, so the, uh, the filings themselves are not, you know, necessarily made public. They're confidential. Um, filed to the, the, uh, California ISO and also to the PUC. Um, we do include, again, developing resources in that, right? So it is based on the contracts we have and the schedules of those developing resources. Um, so, um, you know, that, that is obviously, as you approach the, the year in which a resource coming online, it's coming online expected in 2024. Um, you know, we may include it, uh, in, in 2024 this year. And then if that moves up, we might include it in 2023 if it's sooner, or if it gets pushed back, we'll, we'll adjust kind of each year as we file the year ahead. Um, year ahead reports and the, the month ahead, obviously, it's got to be even more granular and, and only counted once it's online. Um, the penalties, I think I also heard in that as well. Um, so there's, um, uh, let's see, the, the waiver process, um, i- is available if you're, you know, if you demonstrate that you've done everything you can, uh, to define Local RA. And if you do so, there's no penalty involved in that. There are penalties though for System RA and for Flex RA as well. Um, those are ever-changing and they kind of change seasonally as well. Um, but there's, there's a, you know, significant financial penalty as well for, for each megawatt that you, that you're short, um, both in the year-end filing and potentially in the month-end filing as well.
All right. And thank you, Byron, for that, uh, for those comments. And, um, and if there are no other questions, uh, we will receive and file this report. Thank you for the update. Bill, did you have anything to say? I just saw your video come up.
No, I'm just getting ready for, uh, item 14 in case.
All right.
For that one, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Byron. So let's move to our committee reports and updates. Item number 13 is an update from the Finance and Risk Management Committee, and that is, uh, Director Dedina.
Uh, actually, Chair Mosca, uh, I'll yield to Mayor Dedina if you'd like to make remarks, but I'm, I'm on standby if necessary.
No, you, you go ahead, Eric.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mayor Dedina. Uh, uh, Chair Mosca, the Finance Committee reviewed two items that were previously presented, uh, under the, uh, regular agenda as well as under the Information Reports Update. Item number six was discussed at F R M C and elevated to the board for discussion as well as item nine, under the Information Reports and Update, receiving file the Treasurers Report. Uh, there's nothing further, uh, to report under the, uh, Finance and Risk Management Committee.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Um, item number 14, update on CEO search ad hoc committee efforts. Um, this is either Vice Chair Padilla or Director Baber.
Uh, I can do it unless Bill Carnahan, do you want to do it?
No, you can do it.
Okay.
Unless you want me to do it.
Sid, we're the last one. We are diligently working to, uh, bring our new executive director to us within the six-month time window. Uh, our add-on committee meets at least once a week, or we try to. Um, and we're in the phase now, what we're calling Phase One, where we are engaging the executive search services. We're trying to find the best, um, executive search service. We put out an RFP. It's due November 8th. We've sent the information to all of the city's, uh, HR departments. And if anyone in the audience has a suggestion on a search firm, we will, um, review all RFP responses. Once we get that done, then we'll start working with the search firm and the, and the details. And then eventually we'll get to Phase Three, where we actually interview the, uh, candidates. And then finally we'll hire the most qualified candidate. That is the quick summary.
All right. Any questions for Director Baber? All right. Let's move to report by our interim CEO, Bill Carnahan.
Bill, you're muted.
Bill Carnahan, are you?
I'm here. I couldn't find the button. So, uh, no report. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Um, any report from our General Counsel, Ryan?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Any director comments? If not, my comment is have a nice evening, have a nice Halloween, um, and ha- don't eat too much sugar and, uh, and have a nice dinner. Bye, guys. Thank you.
You, bye.